We'll go ahead and call this meeting as the budget session of the city council for order. Are we recording? Are we live?
We're there.
Okay.
Not live on.
Well.
Yeah.
All right. So, on today's agenda, we have Water and Sewer Fund, Water and Sewer Rates, and we have the Financial Health Update, and Internal Services Finance. And we'll start with Water and Sewer.
Okay, thank you.
Smalls.
Just the accounts that we want to go over as far as the budget today deal with our water plant, our wastewater plant, the engineering associated with the Water and Sewer Fund, as well as our utility section which handles infrastructure, sewer piping, water piping, stormwater piping. So, what I'd like to do first, if you don't mind me getting ahold of me a little bit, I came across this little video we had done, like ERGC. It gives you an idea how our infrastructure in water and sewer have expanded in the city. So, the first one we have here is, I think, sewer. You can see on the chart there as it grows over the years, there's a timeline. If you want to go back and just pause it, hit pause. The big blue.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, then reach up to the little blue stripe that it was growing, right there, and drag that back. If you take it all the way back to the beginning, you can go a little slower. Up at the top there, you see the year? And each one of those squares is a plan of a sewer line that was built. So, as the years go by, you can see how our sewer infrastructure has grown and grown and grown. Probably drag it slowly across there. How does it look for you different? If it matches, you can see it in the boom sixties, and in the seventies, there's the thirteen extensions.
Wow.
So, each one of those is a drawing that was prepared for a construction project as the sewer was extended.
And the Eastern Sewer Regional GIS Cooperatives is in the process of digitizing all this data for us for our water, sewer, and storm drains right now. So, that is why they put this together.
Like that.
There's your sewer network and a whole bunch of draw lines and everything. Yeah, if you do the full speed.
Is that Warwick out there?
I think the one on the, to the south, that's the airport.
Airport?
Airport.
Nineteen ninety.
You're going from the twenties up through the... That's a lot of play.
Yeah.
And you win the prize for bringing us the best AV stuff.
Now we have the laser light set.
You've already got this competition going on the power plant between him and me. I'm never going to compete on Excel spreadsheets, I give you that, but we'll see where we go. The accounts that I'd like to go over deal with, like I said, water sewer engineering, water treatment, water branch, water administration, sewer service engineering, wastewater treatment plant, sewer division, pre-treatment monitoring, and sewer administration. So, the first account, going from there, is eighty-one oh eight oh, Water Engineering Branch. I think that's page eleven hundred if we found it. All right, here she's numbered. Good. All right. The significant changes we're requesting in that is we've, in our engineering architectural, we took out a lot of the CIP projects until we got things squared away as far as the selection of those. But we included four thousand dollars in there to hire an intern from Eastern Shore Regional GIS Cooperative to assist with our GIS database development. So, that was a good example there. You see all those plans and everything that you're assisting. That intern that we got will help us pull that into our network and provide a great data source with that. One of the challenges with GIS is you realize it's one thing to get all that data in, the next step is to keep that data relevant and up to date. So, we've asked for that. Again, it's taking advantage of Salisbury University being as close it is with the student access there. It's fantastic. The next critical item were pagers. We talked about that on the general fund. We're eliminating funding for a lot of pages because most of our employees now, other than those ones in Princess Anne, have smartphones that they can get text messages on right away from. Under the computer software water portion, we've got an increase there with our license requirements. You can see the GIS, Maryland Property View, we share that cost with other departments, our survey software, our water modeling system, and the Secrecy City Excesses. Under capital outlay, you can see there we have water main construction projects. We have thirty thousand dollars in there. That is to account for water services that we need to relocate as part of the Phase Six work that the state is doing on Route Thirteen with their stormwater relocation projects. We have certain water services that weren't grandfathered in by terminology that were added after, that right ways were secured. So, we need to have that funding available to relocate that. So, overall, within that account, we've got four hundred and ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars in personnel expenses, ninety-three thousand six seventy-nine in operating expenses, and, as I mentioned, the thirty thousand in capital outlay. Any questions on that?
Yes. What's accounting for in the Personnel Services? We've got a jump, I mean, it can't just be this intern. We've got a jump from our four oh nine, current year, expected four hundred nine thousand nine hundred seventy-five. Your finance request was four oh one two one nine, but the mayor's budget is four hundred ninety-nine thousand eight hundred eighty-eight.
Which line?
I'm on page eleven oh two of the big book.
Oh, oh, okay. The increase, I believe, on that was the staff. Is that all rolled into all those costs?
That's the... The staff increase for eighty-one oh eight was eight hundred sixty-three dollars. The big jump was in the non-terrible, last year's budget of two seventy-four, three hundred twenty-four thousand, fifty thousand dollar jump in salary non-terrible.
I wonder if that's a staffing thing or if I'm getting back up on staff.
It also shares, that's one of the ones that's been mentioned before.
Oh, okay. There's some personnel where the different accounts have part of my salary goes with the water sewer, part of the general fund. So, the only full-time position that's reflected on the budget thing was just job involved in the GMS. But that would be my guess in terms of personnel. Beginning of the year, we were staffed. We had a lot of positions we had to fill. We're planning on giving those all to... Yeah, that's something we can follow up with.
Okay, because, like I said, it went from four oh nine, and Mr. Cord, he mentioned a fifty K jump, but we're looking at a ninety-eight thousand dollar jump.
It's that increase in salaries and then everything else will go up too. It was mainly that salaries that would drive it. We can bring that higher increase probably into some schedule for you.
Yeah, let me just explain to folks why it's an increase of ninety-eight thousand dollars. My other question is on capital outlay. I understand what you mean about taking out the CIP until we know what's going on there, but shouldn't we have some idea of what absolutely positively has to be done in this fiscal year for the capital outlay to drop from three hundred twenty-five thousand, well, excuse me, three hundred sixty-four thousand nine hundred fifty down to thirty thousand dollars? Looks like we're going to be looking at budget amendments for when things come across and say, oh, we need to do this.
If I understood it correctly, this was, this had to do with the review of the CIP and pulling projects? Or maybe not?
Pulling it together, our directive was to not put the CIP stuff in, I think, I guess was the timing. And, of course, the mayor's made his recommendations on projects that will be included. And I'll touch on those capital projects a little later of what we're proposing to do. So, there's things that we're going to be doing next year, capital related in Water and Sewer, that have been identified.
Yeah, my point is that that's what the numbers should be because I realize we have fiscal policy limits how much we can exceed a certain percentage in our revenues. And it's tighter on the operating end, I think, than it is on the capital, but that's what that looks like is, I'd like to see those numbers because we had a problem one year where the request exceeded what our fiscal policy called for. And that, to me, is one way of holding within the limits, but then exceeding them later. Because we know that it doesn't prohibit us from doing budget amendments to accommodate these things, but just, you know, as transparency to the public about what money's really going to go for, that should be in there. And if we're pushing some limit on our fiscal policy, we should know that upfront.
When we get to the end of going through the accounts, we'll touch on the capital projects and we can come back.
That'd be great. I would appreciate that.
Because I think they're going to be shown separately this year on a separate schedule in the ordinance and not in each account like they've been shown in the past. So, I think that's also going to look a little deceiving in a couple of sections, like the capital outlay from last year where we're eliminating some money, that was a specific water main project, which was done this year. And I think in the future, it'll be that the Schedule B on your budget ordinance will list all the capital projects instead of in these accounts, which keeps your statement better.
I'd like to stay on the subject if you don't mind, Mr. Dade. Why are we doing that, and how can we see a comparable one? Because I think it is confusing is the word I would use.
The budget ordinance that was read Monday night, we had Schedule A and we had Schedule B. And Schedule B was a list of the capital projects. Probably have that scheduled up here. I can put it up on the screen for us.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind.
Yeah, see what it looks like. So, the ordinance said Schedule A has all of our general fund and water sewer fund and Marina Fund, park fund, operating expenditures appropriations. And in addition, it had another section that said the following appropriations would be completed as well as part of that budget ordinance. And our general capital projects fund is a fund that is used to account for all of our capital projects and is recorded separately in our audit booklet. So, it's a separate entity from our general fund. And so, a lot of times in the past, the fire station, like the previous fire station, Station Sixteen, arose in the middle of the year. So, there was no, quote, budget ordinance done. We researched it, and it just when it became time to build it, the authorization occurred via an actual bond resolution document that authorized the issuance of the debt. And the issuance of debt then was the finance department's support to go ahead and to load those accounts with funding for appropriations to build the fire station. So, there was nothing at the beginning of the year that allowed council to say, we're going to build a fire station, you know, at the beginning of the year. It just occurred during the process during the year. So, in the past, for a lot of projects, the authorization has occurred by, A, accepting the funds in a donation, or accepting a grant, or accepting the issuance of debt. And it just, we use our CIP planning document to know, hey, we're planning on doing this, but it's not until that those funds get approved through those processes that we actually have a final appropriation.
So, you're saying there was no projection and debt service in the ordinance for that?
We have, debt service is included for these items in our budgets.
There was nothing in revenue and nothing in debt service? I realize that sometimes when we do these bond issuances, we do the mid-year and we don't see the actual payment till the next fiscal year. But there was nothing in terms of a revenue entry or anything that said we're going to be working on a bond issuance?
You mean for?
For the fire station example that he's giving.
There was no, the thing that we verified for the fire station was the chief never prepared a budget ordinance for that year for the fire station.
It came up in the middle of the year.
Right. And that's just one example where there was, it was never budgeted as part of the general fund.
I'm just curious, how?
Yeah.
How did that happen?
Well, typically, the capital project fund is budgeted separately from the general fund, and the accounting for the activity is separate. They're two separate things. And so, I think that what this allows the council to do is to see, just speaking about the general fund, we plan to do four projects. And you can appropriate them now in one swoop at the beginning of the year based on this information. And that way, that people won't have to come see you during the year and that it's part of your budget ordinance. So, again, in the past, the way that you've approved capital projects is by accepting the grant or the bond resolution or passing ordinances for transfers of funds. You can see, like, under the column, Transfer or Pay As You Go, we have two projects, the park eration unit placement for twenty-seven thousand and the Gory Road project for two hundred and eighty, where we're proposing to fund those from funds this year, revenues from this year. But everything else is based on funds on hand in the water sewer capital project. But some of the reasons, some of the reasons that we propose to include the capital projects in the budget ordinance is it's going to allow Public Works, additional efficiencies to act on new projects. The mayor likes to shovel the ground on July first. Just as soon as July comes, he thinks, you know, we should be working on these things. And, for example, these four projects, or five projects on the end there that we're using, proposing to use these funds on hand, that by you approving this in the budget ordinance, Public Works could start those projects immediately and at least start the ones that you approve as part of this budget ordinance. So, it's going to give us a quicker ability to get started sooner versus later, gives better visibility to all stakeholders because all of you can see exactly the projects that are being proposed to be managed in the capital project fund, and also in the water sewer capital projects. When you co-mingle the capital projects with the operating budgets, it makes it harder to compare historical data and discern trends in operating costs. So, by putting capital projects and appropriating them separately from your general fund and your operating activity, it's going to make it cleaner. This is what the county does, is exactly how the county does it, called the Andy Mackel. I spoke to Pam Baker, you know, our auditor, and that's how it's typically done. And I looked at a couple of model cities that had won some awards, Swanee, Georgia's, and it was very good, and they'd won many awards, and that's how they do it as well.
So, they have an annual capital plan?
They, in addition, they have exactly what we have. They have the five-year capital plan, as you said.
But they have an annual...
They give the council a chance to approve multiple capital projects and appropriate them as well.
Well, the thing is that with our budget ordinance, normally, you know, people just keep saying, oh, it's a program-based budget. Well, really, it's not because that's not how program-based budgets work. It's just buckets by department in which a lot of funds are in there. And they are co-mingle. The breakout that we see is typically through the blue book. And bringing this up, it's not that I necessarily have a problem with doing it this way, I just want to be sure that what we're doing is compatible with the way our fiscal policy is written so that we are not exceeding what was a desired limit on our budgetary spending so that, you know, we didn't have these wild fluctuations in our budget. So, it may be that we would need to see how would this look if we captured back to the old way? And we'll have to have a copy of our fiscal policy in hand and just...
Match it up, yes.
If you can take a look at it, because, like I said, if we need to make changes to that fiscal policy, then so be it. But we do want to clear what it is that we're going to do. And if these are going to be separated out, we need to make sure that the way the ordinance reads, that this doesn't become, well, it's not with the operating funds, so we'll just transfer it anyway, or, you know, because we have specific rules about making transfers among the departments. So, I just want to be sure this is compatible with the other things that we have.
Exactly. Yeah, we can't transfer to other funds unless it is an appropriation to do so. So, you can see for the general capital projects fund, there's no transfer or pay go, pay as you go, because everything's being proposed to be paid from debt or grants or donations. So, there'll be no transfers related to those projects unless you, a budget ordinance calls for it. So, this maps it out for you so you can see exactly what are, like, the CIP is a plan, but as you know, if we do that in December, a lot can change between then and April and May as we get into our operating budget determine which projects are going to be feasible and how additional work that's been done on those projects gives us better visibility on exactly what is feasible, those costs could change. The planning document is a path, is part of, part of the step in the path, and as we get closer to May, we start to get feedback from the administration that says, hey, out of those that we had said we want to do in our planning document, these are the ones that we are ready to move forward with. And it gives you visibility, and you can say yes or no to this. And it gives our, it gives our public visibility as well, because they're standing out here and you can see very clearly. And you can see the funding source very clearly.
I'll just kind of wrap up because I know there's need a chance here. But the one thing that I want to be sure of is we're governments, not just us, or we'll need to necessarily provide to us, but, you know, one of the things that I want to be sure about is that where some governments get into a little bit of trouble is we go through this budgeting process, and the public is not aware of just how much supplemental budgeting goes on that governments do. I read a fantastic article about this that's not subject to oversight, that's just, you know, oh, we got these grants and we got this grant money, and oh, we're going to do this and that. And there's just tons and tons of stuff that happens that way without the appropriate oversight or the public really being aware. And then somehow later on, that supplemental budgeting starts filtering its way back into the general budgeting, and it just sort of sneaks up on you, and then you go, oh, wow, we need to start substantially increase our taxes. So, I just want to be sure that as we go into this, that we're very clear where the money is going, the public's very clear on it, that we understand what departments need, what level of funding. You know, I don't have a problem at all with changing some methodologies, so if that's clear, then that's been in place.
So, as we go forward through the different accounts, probably what you'll see is you'll see reductions of funds, capital-type funds from projects from last year, because these aren't affected because it's on a budget allocation. Okay. Any other questions on the eight-one oh eight oh Water Engineering? The next page at eleven oh three, I forgot to mention this the last time, but the organization chart that we had, remember that it's quite different? I know when I was interviewing for the job, I was trying to look at how that worked, I was confused as heck. So, we rebuilt it this year.
How you doing now?
Well, I thought it looked a little better, but I associated account numbers with it and everything, but you'll see it kind of reflects on each one to kind of give you the big picture. So, if you want to see anything different next year, please just let me know. I was hoping that was an improvement that we wanted to do. All right. The next account is eight-two oh seven five, the Water Treatment Branch. Under Personnel Services, we are requesting unfreezing the office associate position for the Water Treatment Plant. As mentioned, as the mayor mentioned, we have eight frozen positions. We're giving up six of those frozen positions. One of them was the Water Division Chief position, and talking to my different division heads, they felt comfortable being able to assume that role. The only issue we had was in our water plant. They're the only ones that don't have any administrative help, you know, with the paperwork associated with that. So, as part of the giving up that position, it was agreed, the mayor would support unfreezing the office associate position. So, each of our division heads will have an administrative position that will help support them so that they can be doing the important stuff, a lot of the filing, phoning type of thing is more efficiently done.
And they used to have one. This is, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was a frozen. Other significant changes, you can see decreased night differential, decrease in safety passes. Looking at ways to cut costs in there. Operating expenses decreasing, we don't have to do volatile sampling for our water lab, that's a decrease of twenty-five hundred dollars. Decrease in our janitorial services, renegotiating our contracts. Buildings, the Parks Plan, expansion of Paleo, we've got some increase there, in-ground keeping contracts for that. And under equipment, we've seen the work being done at the Park Plant with the high-service pumps that's going on and on. Hope to end soon. There's another valve, shut-off valve on another high-service pump that we can do ourselves. The old valve just doesn't hold anymore since we have a problem with it. We have water back weekend, so we have seven thousand dollars requested to put a shut-off valve in there.
Like the groundskeeping contract increase? Is that, that has to do with the anticipation of additional work that will go along with once the wastewater treatment plant is upgraded, or is that...
This is the water plant.
I'm sorry, that's just...
Yeah, this is our contract there.
So, can you explain why the increase there?
Obviously, the lawn mowing, trimming type work. I don't think they do anything with the fountain.
They paint the fountain, but also at Paleo, if you've been by Paleo recently, you'll see the big new building that's our chemical feed system. So, that, also, they increased costs of just maintaining that building.
I thought that was your new cool clubhouse. Guess not.
If you don't mind large chemical tanks.
On the next page, we have the elevated storage tanks, decrease of thirty thousand dollars. We're looking at different ways to deal with our tank maintenance, rather than just a regular maintenance, looking at more a period, kind of every, every three years, a more significant effort that goes into it rather than you, your patch and touch-ups kind of thing, a more of a holistic approach on how to deal with these kind of things.
So, that's unrelated to the one on Tower Street, I guess, coming offline?
It is unrelated, correct.
Yeah, we're trying to sell that as a penthouse.
Right. Yeah. I'm trying to save up money because I want to move in there.
Okay. We have computers, an increase of eleven hundred and fifty dollars, again, with the assistant position being filled, and I have an old computer that handles our SCA and alarm systems. We need to replace that computer. Copiers, a decrease of fourteen hundred dollars for negotiation. Copiers, a decrease of $1,400 for negotiation of our contract costs. Decrease in electricity per our energy consultant's recommendation. And I think that's even been adjusted further with the new contract for less usage. Natural gas, an increase again per the energy consultant's recommendation. We've got more, more building to keep warm. And with our generators that we've added to make them, we can operate completely on generator. Increase in fuel costs for exercising that, you know. And if you're not aware, we're looking at a demand reduction contract with them to be able to operate, excuse me, the water plant and the wastewater plant to, when we have peak demand requests from the energy company. So we could go off the grid, operate in a generator, and then get a check for that.
That will totally reimburse us for our efforts?
It's, well, this is a pilot project, we can just continue whatever we do. But part of the effort is to evaluate those costs of running it versus what we're getting at. Because electricity in periods is very expensive. So we've enrolled in this thing to try it. And again, you only get paid if you do it. So if there's something serious going on where we can't do it, we just elect not to do it.
On that particular day or so?
The calls are, I could give you more details if you're interested. But they limit the period of time that you're off the grid. And it's basically, I think, the summer months, I think, are the key months where they have those demand links with air conditioning costs. But it's a way of being more green, because of the costs of building peak generating capacity and, of course, electric rates, and it is very significant.
So under peak demand in the summer, we might look at, I mean, as much as two to three hours a day?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, you know, we're going to be exercising our generators anyway. When you're doing it on full load, which is what you want to operate a generator on. Because if you do, now being on full load, you build up carbon deposits in the generator. And it works better, so.
Got to take her out for a spin.
Exactly, exactly. We'll, we'll see how that works and see how, if it becomes a positive for us. Then under that account there, we're looking at 719,649 personnel costs. Operating costs of 801,066 and no capital outlays. Any other questions on that?
Just the request is, the difference between finance request and the mayor's budget was pretty significant there in the opposite direction for operating.
From 951 plus 668, did he want?
Yes. You know what that was?
Trying to see if there's anything that really jumped out. Skilled services. Going from 101,75,000.
I need to schedule.
Yeah, do you have the required class? Okay.
It's like a 50%, nearly a 50% reduction.
From current year expected?
From current year expected, yeah.
Part of the biggest ones, oh, one of the big things, let's see if I can get my things here. Chemicals. We, we had a lot of encumbered money. So I challenged my people to say that, in terms of asking for the same thing every year, to look back in terms of what we've encumbered in terms of contracts, and told them that we need to fill those out before we start asking for money. So that is one reduction there. That's pretty significant.
What's it encumbered from? Chemicals?
Yeah, contracts for chemical suppliers. Trying to think of that. Clastics and fluoride and...
That's interesting, because we...
All those kind of things.
We had to deal with a lot of increases as a result of, oh, my gosh, you know, the chemicals have gone up so bad in price, and gee, we need so many more chemicals for the wastewater treatment plant and for the water. And now, oh, gosh, well, now we have what we need, and it just sounds like, gee, maybe there was some other purchasing going on.
Well, it was, that was one of the things I challenged on that, doing my budget here, was to look at that and see where we are with some of these things. I wanted them to tell me what they really needed. And so that's an outgrowth of looking at this stuff there. All right. Any other questions?
I don't know where to find it, but, um, does the water quality mailing, that's annual or semi-annual?
It's annual.
Okay. I didn't know where to find that, but that comes out of your shop, though, yes?
It should come out of this department.
Oh, it's under postage, they have the mailing, the annual consumer confidence report.
And printing.
Can you give me a page number?
Postage is 546008.
Okay.
And what did you say?
555502.
You say postage is what?
I was giving you the account number.
Oh, 54... Really?
Yeah. I know, steering you the right spot. Your postage is 5,000.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
And printing's 3,900.
So, so roughly $8,000 for 54,000.
That's, that's a lot. Oh, that's associated with water quality report every year.
Yeah, because you have to print it out and leave it.
Absolutely, a little regulatory component.
So the number 54,608 was what?
That's just an account number.
Oh, okay, all right. But how many copies do you do? How many, how many...
I'm trying to think, how many accounts do they, do they feel for how many accounts?
But it's one for every, one for every water account?
Yeah.
One for every water account, not necessarily, yeah.
Well, yeah.
Whoever gets water from us, so.
Okay.
We could get you that number.
It'd be nice if we could, you know, subtract the people who really don't care about getting it.
Well, it's a regulatory thing.
I understand, yeah.
I know, I read mine cover to cover religiously every year.
Mine's tacked to the inside of a cupboard in my house.
Well, a lot of times when, when we do those, you want to get out that, let them know that there's not, it's not a problem. You kind of work that in there, you know, that this is, this is okay with this room. Because you can, if somebody sees that and they think, oh, my God, copper and no water. It's a bad thing. No, no, it's okay.
Yeah, actually, you know, we joke about it, but there are a number of people in our area who do follow water quality.
That's a good thing.
Many, many years, and that is a good thing. And they have, and part of the reason I do keep it handy is I do, from time to time, get questions from these folks about it. You know, sometimes it needs to be, to leave a little translated, and sometimes it's a, from the public works type thing. But it is good that we have that monitor going on.
This is not bottled water, I just want to use the bottle.
Okay. You may have been called on that at some point.
Okay, will I move on to the next one?
Yes.
All right, 82076 is our water and sewer branch. No significant changes in Personnel Services. Under operating expenses, decrease of 1,500. Several purchase orders to purchase stone. So our inventory was in good shape, so, again, goes back to not needing to get anything this year, so we backed that out. Under postage, there's an increase of $2,032.20. The main thing there is we've transferred the shipping of our water meters. Used to be the wastewater plant was handling the shipping of that cost. We've taken that away from there and put it into our utilities branch. So they, obviously, shipping these meters, these things are heavy, so there's some postage costs. We can get them back to get calibrated or repaired. So it's just transferring the cost there.
Understand.
Computer, again, decrease of 1,500. We've updated a lot of the computers associated with our city works projects. So there's a decrease there. Increase under safety of 1173 for placing a gas monitor, which is, of course, very important for crews when they're going into manholes, confined space. And under copier, again, a decrease, we're seeing there, $173 in savings on the contract. Under pagers, again, eliminating our pagers, so there's a decrease of $1,800. Internet service increase. One of the problems we've had with some of the service was getting better NPS service over there. So Bill was able to look at that, negotiate something to improve our service. It was affecting our city works inventory and that, so we've upgraded our, our service over there. Travel, increase in monitor reimbursement. We've had, this winter, a lot of repairs on the water system. So we're trying to accommodate that as our system gets older. And with the training in schools, an increase of $500. We've got a lot of new employees in our utilities branch. And Walt over there has done a great job getting his crew all certified under Maryland Department of the Environment. So he's continuing to push things, training on that. So I'm proud of that effort. So under Personnel Services, request is 731,410. Operating expenses, 248,122, and no capital outlays. Any thoughts or questions?
Very quickly going back to the chemical issue. I, I have to say, number one, I really applaud you for asking your staff to go back and check that. And to me, there was, is no better explanation, rationale for doing zero-based budgeting than what we just explained. Because what happens is governments get into their habit, and it's like, you know, we'll cut it back 1% or increase it by no more than 2%. Instead of saying, what do we really need to do this year? Let's start from scratch, here's how many people we need, we're just doing our basic functioning. Here's our personnel cost, and, you know, here's what we need, as you say, checking in and forth. Here are the capital projects we're going to need. I mean, we've been told before that, that it's been done that way, but it's not true zero-based budgeting the way that it's been done itself, really, to say that. So your, your comment on that is the closest thing that I've heard that truly models that concept. And that's something I really would like to encourage the administration to do, because it gives a much truer picture of what we need in order to accomplish what we're going to do for that coming year.
I think that's the best way to put it, Terry, that this, this is the closest example to zero-based budgeting that we've seen. Ever, and, and I think everything we've looked at so far is clearly not zero-based budgeting. Not that it's inappropriate or bad, or, but it's not. I think this is, I think this is a, you know, the fact that you asked your staff to do that, that's...
Well, meeting this first budget, one of the challenges I had is to understand what are the numbers? And this was a way of finding out what it actually costs to do this a year, so that I can come with a number that reflects what it is, rather than getting all cloudy with all this other stuff. So it helped me understand the process, and that came to the question and the answer.
I applaud your approach. I think it's something we should be doing across the board throughout the city, everywhere.
Good, thank you.
Because I, I think we'll see, you know, far better rationales for why, you know, we have changes in our costs. We, we won't have the public, you know, concerned that, you know, you just... We, we've had situations in the past where a tax increase was said to be for something, and then it didn't get used for that. And then it went to surplus, and boom, we had a surplus, and just in time for election year. And, you know, I mean, it's just so much truer for the public to be able to hear. We went through, and this is what we had on hand, and this is what we're going to need, and this is what we have to accomplish, this is how many people we're going to be needing to do, accomplish that. So I, like I said, I just want to applaud you for everything.
Any other questions?
No, just, just a comment. You know, the further we get into the budget, the clearer your, or the more helpful it is that clarification you've provided and your organizational structure chart becomes, so. Just, just an applause.
Believe it, helped me too.
Yeah, it's, it's great, it's very clear.
All right.
Switching to Sarah now?
Here we go, Water Administration, 83000.
Oh, sorry.
Nothing, nothing, nothing.
Personnel expense, no significant changes proposed for personnel operating or capital. Under Personnel Services, we're looking at 147,618. Operating expenses, 255,130. And like I said, no capital on that. Very straightforward. Any questions? Good. All right, now sewer. 84080 is our sewer engineering branch. We're not looking at any significant changes on Personnel Services. Under operating expenses, there's a good old pager elimination. And the computer software updates. If you recall, in the general fund, we had split our licensing there. So we've got some decreases in some licenses and increases in the other, so that we can maintain our licenses and customer-party service if you have a problem. And no capital outlays proposed.
There was, here's $40,000 in capital outlay?
Yeah, I was going to touch on that. We have Personnel Services for that, we're looking at 523,989. Operating expenses, 248,716,000. And under capital outlay, you'll see $40,000. That is the equipment portion of a, what the mayor's ordered, our recommendation, for a sewer infiltration inflow study, sewer modeling, and flow measuring. What we want to do is, we need to have a good model of what our sewer flows are going through the system so that we can project what capacity we have for new development and be able to do that. So let's say when the development comes in, let's say, like Addison Court, you go in and you can model, let's see what's projected in those flows. And then we have these flow meter we want to get, that you can insert in the manhole, leave it there for a period of time, pull it out, and it provides data that you can then go to verify what those flows are. Because flows, obviously, are up and down, up and down, all through the day. When I got here, talking to Amanda, I realized we really didn't have a good feel for where that flow goes. If you remember the North Division Street discussion, where we were looking at putting a new line down there, North Division, and there'd been concern years ago about having capacity, because that service is out group 13. What we found out later on is that there was a problem with the pumps that were feeding that were worn out. We replaced those pumps, and the problem kind of went away. But that kind of information, having that model that you can keep updating with development, so that if a developer comes in, we can say, you need to pay to help upgrade this line in order for you to service it, rather than finding out five years later that, no, we got to do it ourselves.
So is this akin to the traffic cables in the road that take traffic counts? So when we're doing a flow meter, is that kind of a...
Not dissimilar. This will be a flow meter on a band that you insert in a pipe, and it'll give constant readings. It's looking at the level and calculating how deep the, the flow is, and then it gives us an estimate of what's going through. So our staff can do this themselves and download the information on a computer, and then we can analyze it. So the, the flow meters will be something that we own and can put around town when we have problem areas. Interestingly, we were just evaluating a project on the south side of town, south of the college, and we noticed that a, a line was continually surcharged. So the first comment is, oh, there must be a capacity issue, let's monitor this for a while. And then our utilities branch found a large, a large grease clog that had us clogged about 90% full. So something like going in with the meter, starting to investigate, looking at the flow, and saying, well, gosh, it's not a capacity issue, let's keep digging, and then we found a clog. So we're very excited to try to get these flow meters and use them all over town.
That's great, yeah.
That's, that's, that 40,000 is just probably, you'll see later, the 160,000 is split up in another account. But just the, overall, we're looking at 200,000 for the INI study. Kind of a model, thing, the flow metering.
What do your flow meters cost per, roughly?
I think basically between, this is a unit, this is one unit. And it has these bands that fit different-sized pipes and everything, but it stores it on a chip. I can get you the catalog information if you're curious on it.
No, I just wondered if you had a ballpark idea of what they cost each?
Oh, that, that 40,000 is... Oh, that forty thousand is...
That's it for one. Okay, got it. Thank you.
They have a mechanism where you put it in without having to go into the manhole so you can avoid confined spaces.
It's a band, so it has a grabber. It closes the band, you stick it in and then it winds it up.
Oh, it's a pressure tension spring kinda thing?
Yep. What it uses is the dirty water creates changes in the magnetic field. As it goes through this thing, it can sense the depth by pressure sensors. And then that sends it up the cable into the unit which hangs up in the manhole, up the wetness and reports that data.
Got it.
And you just come and download it on a laptop and get your information.
Gee, and I got all excited because I bought a moisture meter.
Or we can let you borrow it if you want.
For twenty-five bucks, you know, I just thought that was just a cash payout.
Oh, there's some other stuff we've been playing with. It was like round penetrating radar demonstration. That was some cool stuff. Walt had, was showing me a device that crawls up the sewer and can scan with a laser, do a profile.
I told you they're the ones that do the laser. I actually...
Yeah. That's great.
Believe me, there's a lot of neat toys out there. All right, good. The next account we have, of course, is our wastewater treatment branch. Under significant changes, Personnel Services, safety shoes increased there. We got getting fully stacked up plant to provide your safety shoe enforcement policy.
I lost you here.
I'm sorry. Twelve oh nine.
Thank you.
We got some intervening pages.
Oh, is that the section on the billing part?
Yes. And administrative stuff.
How are the employees doing with the safety shoe thing? Are they, are they...
Taking full advantage of it.
Good stuff.
They like it a lot. Yes, they're very happy with this place.
Good.
I'll tell you that, it sounds like such a small thing, but that's something that we're really proud of.
Yes, yeah, they're very happy.
Under our greatest counsel, because when we found out that was going wrong, we just said, that's just not right.
We've got that and we've got the safety glasses policy too, so the prescription safety glasses. Under Operating Labs, decrease of nine thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars due to less samples being taken and the left rate and to postage, the decrease there on the walking distance that mentioned earlier. So under Personnel Services, we're looking at one million, eight hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars. Operating expenses, two million, eight hundred and forty-three thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars. Capital outlay of seventy-eight thousand dollars. What that reflects is forty-four thousand dollars for the Omni site devices that we're putting in all our pump stations. We've been funding that in previous years so that eventually of all our pump stations that can report information directly to our treatment plant so we can monitor level operating conditions. There was also thirty-four thousand dollars for a truck replacement out at the plant. We're gonna get them a new truck and we're gonna take the old one and give it over to the yard. So we'll have a second life. That's it. So that's what those numbers were for.
So what's going on with the operating expenses that they're dropping down by a million four?
Eighty-two.
I mean, one point four million's a ton of change.
Eighty-six, eight, oh, let's see, three, sorry. Okay. Let's see, let's see where's the chemical at? Chemicals, there's the other big drop. Let's see what's, oh, there's fifty-four, six, zero, zero, four. Be part of that. Can I get the right one?
Yeah, and that right there's almost seven hundred thousand.
I think we've got some equipment costs, which I think, you know, that's about the same as that one was.
The electric had a...
That's right. That's the other one.
How much?
Ninety. So electric went down by ninety and chemicals went down by about a hundred?
Uh, no, almost seven hundred, well, a little bit over seven hundred thousand on the chemicals.
Wow.
And again, that was, you can see the difference between the approved and the adjusted budgets from FY14. A lot of that was encumbrances carried forward on chemicals. Because that approved budget last year was nine forty-eight, revised budget was one point seven million, so a lot of that was...
Wow.
Well, I, you know, again...
It's just mind blowing.
Don't get me wrong, it's good to have surpluses and stuff, but, you know, when we, when we talk about decreases to our water and sewer rates, mayor said, you know, it's great because it offsets taxes. Well, yeah, it is great if that coincidentally happens, but they should really have no relationship. The rates are supposed to be spent on what is required to do what we need to do that year. And a few years ago, we bid a big hard bullet because we had these big things brought in showing us that we had to jump by thirteen and fifteen percent or else, oh my god. And it wasn't all just wastewater, it was also stormwater and regular water and, you know, just the coverage that the department does. You know, and people were just, I mean, that was not an easy thing to say yes to, but it was probably was absolutely necessary. Now we're starting to reduce things, but at the same time, we still have the elephant across the river there, down, down the road that needs to be taken care of. And I'd like, in the course of talking about this, you know, we've talked about the possibility of, I don't know if it's a possibility or a likelihood or an inevitability of having to raise our debt ceiling. So as we go through this, I really wanna understand what's going on with the rates because at this point, I'm kinda a little frustrated.
Keith, is that, is that something that we're going to have an opportunity to discuss in your presentation or...
It's not only the thing that we're focused on in tonight's presentation, but I mean, the, you know, as part of the process of when we go, to take on the staff, we'll have to raise the debt ceiling.
Okay, so it's an inevitability related to the wastewater treatment?
That's my understanding, but I can present you the figures to schedule the show, the exact amount.
Could I ask, while you're sort of in there with the same information, we have some bond payments going away in this coming fiscal year. And I know it's, you know, we have not in the debt service yet. It was at one point going to make a difference of half a million dollars for us and I think the general fund. But I would like to know, since that was identified, what we have been bonding that might eat that back up because we were trying to be careful not to just swallow that up again. Because a half million dollar rate on debt payments is a big break. I mean, that's like paying, you know, paying off your mortgage or your car payment or something at home where you go, wahoo, now I can devote that money to something else and maybe pay off more debt or... So as we go through that, I'd like to have a better understanding of what we're facing on this wastewater treatment plant and the debt that we're talking about because we're talking about generations to come here. Because this is just one of the most painful things in the city's history.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think we'd already talked about, you know, sixty to eighty years of debt with this. And that's not including building as we go to keep up with demand.
All right, go to the next one? Eighty-six, oh, eight, five, Water and Sewer Branch. Twelve, four, I think. Personnel Services, increase of twelve thousand, five hundred, being requested for the overtime for the coverage, again, with the breaks and things we've, we've seen a jump in that. Operating expenses decreased twenty-two hundred under Skilt Services Maintenance. The gas monitor cost sharing there, we increased twenty-two hundred dollars for that. Excuse me, increase medical based on, we have those contractors coming in, they keep the first aid kits set up and everything. So we're looking at the invoices there and natural gas, decrease recommendation with our energy consultant. And there's no capital outlay for this account. So under Personnel Services, we're looking at six hundred and fifty-two thousand, fifty-seven dollars. Operating expenses, three hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars and Okay, I really feel for these guys, the calls I get on Sunday, you know, middle of the night, sun break, cold and wet.
I gotta say, I've seen your people out on the street when it's just been incredibly cold, incredibly wet, and I just, wow. People, I mean, people just don't realize what your staff puts up with in terms of beyond discomfort into pain, sometimes dangerous situations. I mean, it really, it is just amazing. And they have done an amazing job because, I mean, when you have a water main break and it's three degrees out with a wind chill of six below, it's, it was something to see now there. Please let them know that some people are paying attention, they'll appreciate it.
We'll, we'll let that affect on. Any other questions on that? Next section is Act eight-six, zero, eight-six, our pre-treatment section on our wastewater plant. We have no significant changes proposed under Personnel. Under Operating Expenses, increase monitoring, we're looking at two thousand dollars for use of our outside labs for the industrial samples we take. And we've ramped up our site inspections, so traveling a little bit more and asked for a five hundred dollar increase on gasoline budget to make those checks, make sure everything is what's supposed to be going into sewer is, is going in the sewer. Personnel expenses, one hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven oh seven. Operating expenses, thirty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars and no capital. It's pretty straightforward. And we've got eighty-seven, zero, 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 Sewer Administration. No Personnel Expenses, significant changes. A minor item here, under Operating Expenses, a decrease of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars for our litigation attorney, not needed anymore.
Question?
Yes.
Is anything still ongoing with that one last?
Yes.
Okay, so why would we have that...
We didn't zero a map. There's some encumbered money.
It's just decreased.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we're being hopeful.
And then we can zero them.
Yeah.
Okay. So, and that is just, they have appealed?
They did finally appeal.
They did.
But obviously with this second appeal, your chances reduce.
Now, what, what impact does that have on capital projects that are...
We didn't include that money.
We didn't include that money.
So the, the impact fully eventually will be more money available to do some other things.
Could that, can we just make that a rule, that that's the result of anything maybe?
Absolutely.
The impact will be that there will be more money. I like it.
All right. Good. So under Personnel Expenses, expenses proposed, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Operating expenses, four hundred and sixty-six thousand, two dollars. No capital outlays there. And that's it, Water and Sewer. And the only other thing would be just to touch on those capital costs, capital projects, if you wanted to go back to those.
Just real quick, the, on operating expenses, the decrease there from the seven fifty-nine to the four sixty-six in the approved budget to the FY15 budget, that's about the three twenty.
Yes.
What was, can you just remind me what the, the current, your expected, or the FY14 adjusted increase, what caused that?
It's probably encumbered money on the attorney.
Encumbered only attorneys.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Keith, did you have a question?
Wow. Was I, was I that obvious? No. It really has nothing to do with budget, but it has to do with responsibility. I know that every homeowner, citizen, property owner is required to keep sidewalks and gutters clean by ordinance. Does that include stormwater grates? I mean, if it's adjacent to a property at the end of the gutter?
No, it's something, I mean, obviously, it's in their own interest to do it because obviously the damage to their property could occur because of flooding, but ultimately it's, it's something we have to keep tabs on. Because if you think about it with, when you're in the street, one of the issues with, aside from flooding, is also safety. You get water on the street in the travel lane.
Sure.
You don't want that from there and people can start hogging a plane and have accidents and such.
Speaking of which, I do see your folks coming out and cleaning. I live on the corner, so I have to, and everything feeds and all the pine needles off of La Wall come rushing around the bend. So I wanna compliment them for the number of times they've come out. However, I will say that many has been the deluge that I've gotten out there, you know, and cleaned it out because the water has just, and cars are been through there. And, you know, and the other thing is if it's not flowing down, then one of my neighbors will get their garage and stuff flooded, so, you know, it, it takes advantage on the stormwater grates, you know, when we get a lot of rain. But they're, they're very regular about it and they tend to get out there as soon as they know that we've got impending weather so that they get them cleared out before we did. So I, I have to say, wow.
Okay, thank you. All right, Keith put up the, the capital projects. Manica Sherman, a lot, because she's been working on some of these for a while on that. You can see the Parkside Lift Station, that's using some of the proceeds from the lawsuit. That one is designed, I think, for about...
That one, we actually have the MDE permit. We are ready to bid that one as, as soon as the fiscal year starts. That one is a hundred percent ready to bid.
I'm sorry, which one is this?
Parkside Lift Station.
The one point three five?
Yes. And Parkside is one of the lift stations where the upstream pump station from it is actually a larger capacity, so it's a bottleneck in the system. It's getting a significant upgrade, including stationary generator. And that one point three million does include full-time inspection services and outside construction administration services to supplement our technical services staff.
Would you go ahead and just keep going?
Oh, sure, okay. The next one is the Fitzwater Street Lift Station, and that's two point eight million. And Fitzwater Lift Station is currently located in Fitzwater Street, so you drive over the wet well, so it's very difficult to access. It's a safety concern and it's, and it's older. So we're rebuilding that off the road so that it's easily accessible. Again, it'll have a backup generator, backup pumps, and the state of the art. Fitzwater includes sewer mains in Fitzwater Street as well as a new force main to the north side pump station. So that's why this one is a little bit more expensive than the others.
Amanda, I didn't ask you this earlier, one of the questions, where, to where will it be relocated?
It's almost right behind it. If you look at, if you drive by now and you see this station, you see some electrical cabinets, it's going right behind where those electrical cabinets are. So we are, you know, we own the property, it's there by the marina.
The marina property.
So it's, it's, it's right there. It's just being bypassed slightly. And Fitzwater does serve Purdue, so it's one of our very critical pump stations.
What will that work, what will be the tangible benefits of that work?
Well, first off, the reliability is huge. That's a station where we have two pumps, so if one goes down, we're running on one pump. After Hurricane Sandy, we lost a pump and the road was flooded, so we had to build a dam of sandbags around it to even get in and take care of it. We would hate to have to tell Purdue to, to stop functioning or slow down, but we do coordinate with them at times when we, when we had that one pump go down. The other is major safety concerns. It's just very, very difficult to us to access the station and do anything to it. It's very small, it's antiquated, it has no room to work in there. So by building the newer station, we'll have all the redundancy now that's required by the state. So we'll have an extra pump, we'll have a stationary generator there, we'll have a pump around. So there... We'll have a pump around, so that if we do lose pumps, we'll be able to hook up a bypass pump right on site and pump to a force main connection. Right now, if we have to bypass pump, we're running a force main across Fitzwater Street and down the road to a sewer main hall. So there's no bypass pumping connection at that station. So this one has tremendous benefits, a long list of benefits.
Does this particular, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And isn't it somewhat higher ground?
Oh, it's absolutely, yes, it's higher ground, we'll have to comply with floodplain ordinances. We're right now, that, that pump station is underwater if we get flooded.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that right there is, is a big deal.
So we'll be up, up at the elevations that were required to be a foot or two above the floodplain.
Okay. Now, uh, do we have any other facilities, any other lift stations that are actually in the street like that, under the street?
We do, some smaller ones. This is our most critical, larger one. It's, it's relatively uncommon, but we do have some much, much smaller ones that are on maybe residential streets where it's not as difficult to access. One of the ones you'll see in the capital improvements plan that's a few years off is Blount Avenue. That's, that's another one where it's in the street, and the electrical controls are up a telephone pole. So that's, that has some odd, we have some great pictures in the CIP of that one. But, um, but this really, of, of the size and critical nature, this is the, the key one that's right in the road that's hard to access.
Now, once this is relocated onto the Marina property, you know, that, that's kind of a high visibility, becoming a high visibility corridor with, you know, new development going on there, you know, with the West Side continuing to grow. Is, is there any effort, or could there be an effort to screen it?
We are screening it, that is absolutely part of this project, both offense and some landscaping.
Okay.
Where we realize that it's a critical area.
We're also starting to look at the Marina entrance. The mayor's asked for, to see, come up with a plan with that signage and trying to, I'm getting some prices to try to pave that pride that comes in, that ties in. And there's also discussions about the rowing kayak launch, where we're just starting to, looking ahead at maybe a boathouse kind of thing that could go in there, as that builds. So we're kind of gonna take a whole look at that whole area to try to make it look nicer.
Does this pump station service germinate a circle, that area?
Uh, I believe, yes, I believe that feeds it also.
Is that gonna be an improvement in, in the drainage there, or is it gonna take?
Oh, no, no, not stormwater, no, unfortunately.
That's a little too low still, okay, that's a bad idea. All right.
Uh, the next project is Paleo Well Number Three. This is, would be the third well to serve the Paleo Water Treatment Plant. We had test wells drilled in fiscal year ten. The engineering design is being completed this year, and that cost of two point eight million is the actual construction of this third well to provide redundancy for us in this area. Next project is the Hampshire Road Lift Station, also known as the Sam's Club Lift Station, but it's on Hampshire Road. As Mike mentioned earlier, we recently replaced just the pumps in that station because the impellers were worn down and they were, had very long run times. However, this station still needs a full rehabilitation. It is an old steel wet well, we're trying to get away from that. They don't have the, um, the durability of a concrete wet well, so we'll be putting in a new concrete wet well. Again, the pump around connections, new electrical controls, stationary generator, that's what it is.
What's the depth, how deep does this go?
I think this one's relatively pretty deep. I think the sewer coming in is probably about fifteen feet deep, so, so these are, these are deep stations.
So it's a dig and replace, not a sleeve or anything?
It's a dig and replace, and it's on the same site. We didn't need to acquire any additional land. The way the wet well's situated on one side of the site, we'll be digging the new one on the other side and keeping it in operation the whole time.
Very nice.
Hampshire, Fitzwater, Fitzwater Design, we're done.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, so Fitzwater Design is at about fifty percent. It's the third, it's lagging of these three pump stations with Parkside being permanent. Hampshire Design is at ninety-five percent, so it is in the final design stages and about to go up to the state for permitting. So where we have all these projects listed in the same fiscal year, we would anticipate staggering the bidding somewhat so that the stations are in different phases. But again, with all three of those, we included in full-time outside inspection and construction administration by an outside engineering firm to help supplement our staff because this is a lot to be going on.
And it's Parkside, Hampshire, Fitzwater, and chronological?
That's how, right now, the, they're, they're tracking Fitzwater ranks higher priority-wise than Hampshire. So as we get into the year, Parkside will definitely bid first because it's ready to go. We'll see if, if Fitzwater starts catching up, it may go second, but it'll probably be Hampshire second since it's almost done.
Something to keep in mind, but what we're not mentioning is the Northside and Southside pump station projects that are about ready to go to bid. So we've, we've got a lot of this stuff going on, and we're gonna have a really great system when we're all done with this.
And there's, there's improvements to Northside and Southside that you don't see here because it was funded by a bond, or, so it's already funded. Those are improvements that were laid out in the corrective action plan for the treatment plant. They are not treatment plant eligible, they're not BNR, ENR funding eligible, so they're funded by bonds. And it's, it's not as extensive, where we're not digging or building a new wet well. It's mainly the new grinder units, condensators, odor control systems, electrical controls at these two stations. So that, that'll actually be going first. That'll probably bid in, in June or so, and then Parkside, it's not on its tail. So again, we'll have outside inspection for those.
We wanted to get those out of the way before the last one comes up.
Yes, exactly, yes. Northside, Southside shall be done before the treatment plant starts construction.
Uh, Northside and Southside, just for clarification, what are the streets that those are on?
Uh, Northside is on Fitzwater Street and Delaware Avenue, and it's the large, you can see it, it's the large pump station.
Yes, yeah, yeah, okay, and Southside then is?
Southside is on Ridge Road.
Yep, I know exactly where you're talking about.
And Northside takes about two-thirds of the flow from the city to the treatment plant. Southside takes the other third. There are two main pump stations that come to the treatment plant, so they are really the heartbeat of the system.
Okay.
So, so you're talking about Hampshire Road is, is considered Northside?
Hampshire Road, um...
I mean, let me, let me back, back up. Northside was Fitzwater at Delaware?
Uh, yes.
Okay, and Southside is the Ridge Road?
Southside's at Ridge Road, correct.
How many sides?
On Southside, Ridge Road, uh, just while we're on it, since we talked about screening.
Yes.
I had a few emails over the last few months just asking for some screening.
Okay. We are, we are doing some tree planting there, and, and the odor control system will, will be a, a new benefit?
I think that's, I think tree planting was all they were talking about.
And we are adding a fence, yeah, we're adding a fence, actually, I think we are adding a fence at Southside too, to, to shield the generator. And we're making that one more sort of architectural, like a wood fence. And Northside, it'll be a chain link fence that we're gonna fence the, the entire pump station structure. Uh, the next project is the Park Aeration Unit Replacement, and this is the cost to design and, and build this unit. Most of the funds are on hand from the MTVE proceeds, that, that litigation proceeds. And this is at the Park Water Treatment Plant. The next water item was the twenty-four inch water main at Gordy Road. This is to design this project, this is not construction, and this is part of a loop in the system that we need to provide redundancy in the distribution system from Paleo into the main part of town. Right now, there's primarily one main feed from Paleo into town, and this twenty-four inch will help us start looping multiple feeds of the distribution system from Paleo. We are working on a water model this year that will help us identify other key distribution system improvements. But based on what we had from previous facility studies, this was one that was still very justifiable, and we see a need for it. There's a, a dead end in the direction of Gordy Road right now, and this will help loop that and eliminate that dead end. The last project is the wastewater treatment plant upgrade. So this is our BNR, biological nutrient removal, and ENR, enhanced nutrient removal upgrade.
So what are we doing now?
Well, just a couple little things, little minor improvements there. It's in this fiscal year, fiscal year fifteen, because based on our consent order, we're under a very tight timeline. Our anticipated schedule is that by this fall, we will be pre-qualifying contractors. We'll officially go to bid by January of twenty fifteen, January of next year. And I would be looking to be coming to counsel in the spring of next year to award this contract. Our goal is to break ground next June, June of twenty fifteen. We have to be complete, our effluent needs to meet permit limits by December thirty-first of twenty seventeen. We feel like that's achievable, we're aiming to meet those limits at least six months in advance. There may still be construction going on, but we should have met effluent limits well in advance of that deadline so that we're comfortable about hitting that deadline. So this January, we applied for our BNR and ENR grants and our zero percent interest loan from the state. An application went in in January, and we'll get confirmation of that hopefully late May, early June. But that's also outlined in terms of the financing in our consent agreement. We work very closely with MDE on this and meet with them regularly. So what you're seeing there for the split between grants and the loan is based on the preliminary eligibility from the preliminary engineering report. Final eligibility, eligibility will be determined when bids are open. So we will have, again, more discussions with the state on eligibility. We continually try to tweak that percentage, and it's really on a process-by-process basis, it's very detailed. And at our last meeting with MDE in Baltimore about a month ago, they had asked us to break out the, the schedule of values in the bid form when we go out to bid. A lot of the time, treatment heads are bid as a lump sum. They wanna see that breakdown on bid day so we can absolutely go down and, and know exactly what our eligibility is.
So, when, so the percentage shift that you're looking to achieve is to shift more into state grants? And then, and then the remainder, the bond issuance, is the intent, how, how much of that do we intend to pay down with state loans? Low interest, low-interest state loans? I mean, is, because I, I assume a portion of that can be loans?
I, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Keith, but I believe our intention is to have everything else be with the, because we were offered a zero percent interest loan. So I believe everything that's not grant, we would try to accept.
Okay, so one hundred percent of that would be?
Well, you don't have to pay it back, you only have to pay it back without interest.
Now, is there any chance on forgiveness of some of those loans? I mean, I, I've seen other projects in the state where, sometimes related to water, sometimes related to other projects where there's a, there's a grant loan mix, and the loans are shortly thereafter forgiven. Where after ten years, they're, the remainder is forgiven. Is there any chance?
Well, the way the program's set up, you know, obviously, it's whether it's a grant right now or you get the notice from, what we wanna do is find out right from the get-go. Forget grants, not to worry about paying that. So the, the negotiations are trying to get it to the grant, as opposed to arguing about the loan and neither getting it paid out.
Okay. But right now, that's the split, so we're looking at, um, fifty-seven, fifty-eight?
Yep, it was about forty-eight, it was like grants, yes. And that's, that's a realistic split. That was the split that MDE felt like was realistic after the preliminary engineering report. Even in that report, we were pushing a slightly higher grant percentage, we'll still continue to negotiate it.
And along that line too, we're looking at the overall cost too, to see where we can try to get back those stuff, so.
So at what juncture in all of this, planning for this, are we going to have to make the decision on raising the debt ceiling?
That would be after we get bids, because then we'd know what dollar amount it is.
Would that be correct, Mr. Porter?
I'd like to investigate it some and maybe talk to Mark, because that, from a practical standpoint, that makes sense. From a legal standpoint, if we include this and appropriate it, you know, one could ask, how can you appropriate to exceed the limit that you have in place?
Well, that was kind of part of my rationale in asking.
Right, so we'll talk to Mark and get some feeling, feedback from him.
Another approach might be to do, to raise the debt ceiling, even conjunction with, okay, the passing of the budget?
Yep, we'll put that as a possibility.
Okay, so that's a question for city attorney. I'd also like to ask, when you talk to him, is to find out whether or not, if we've gotta do it sooner rather than later? For example, if we have to do it in order to do the appropriation, we don't know the final split because we haven't gotten to that bidding point. If we can have some sort of a mechanism that if what we raise it to is more than we need, then it drops back to what we need so that we don't have a space in there for other debt to use up? Because that's not the point of raising the debt ceiling. It should be solely for the disaster of having to deal with the wastewater treatment plant.
What is that figure today?
The what?
Our debt ceiling.
Part of the best thing, I sent you a schedule and kind of mapped it out for you.
Yeah, I don't, I don't need to know right this.
We've had some discussions with the curator about options. Of course, one option is, some cities, when they look at their debt, uh, they pull out from those constraints the debt for enterprise funds because they're fee-based. So the question is, is how logical is it to, to have a, have covering document that says what your debt limitation is when you are planning to recover the, the revenue necessary to support that debt service for fees? So it's like, maybe, maybe we should revise our, 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 our debt guidelines to focus on the general fund.
So would that mean any revenue bond would not contribute to the overall debt? Or, or would not contribute to reaching the debt limit?
It's a possibility that we could, we could make our debt limit focused on the general fund and exclude enterprise funds, government funds as opposed to the enterprise fund like water and sewer. Um, it's an option, it's not saying, it's a recommendation, it's just saying it's a possibility, this should be on the table, presented as an option to cancel.
I'd have to think about that, because we do have times when we do transfers to our enterprise funds. We've also had it go the other direction where we've calculated what the general fund overhead is that we contribute to those enterprise funds so that they then pay the general fund, so that that's a little bit more truer, it's a truer picture of where that time, staff time is being split.
From a practical standpoint, the, the only real money that enters into pushing us over though is the water sewer fund. And that's where the big, the big debt is, that would cause, cause us to exceed the limit.
Can you explore that?
Yes, I can give us some options and present a little document that discusses, and we can speak to the administration and make a recommendation on that.
And maybe have Pam Baker weigh in as well?
Yes.
Because, you know, the one thing that we wanna be sure of is that we have a structure that deals with what we're dealing with with the wastewater treatment plant, which is a beast unto itself. But we don't wanna have a situation where we change a number and then it becomes a free rein thing on bond issuance in the general fund. Because one of the things that we're trying really hard to do is decrease our reliance on that because debt payments do not do brick and mortar. They do not provide a lasting return on investment, it's, you know, you're paying out interest. So the more we can get that down, the more those funds can be reinvested in our people, in our capital projects, and...
And can we best to have the complete conversation with some supporting documents, but just, just while we're right on the subject and to maybe give you some relief from any concern about the burden of that debt. We've sat down, we've mapped out the future, and there's a period of time where that MDE only requires a debt service of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So with the decline in debt, in debt service that we've had even in the last year or so, including, say, fifteen, it, it more than, and then washes out the hundred and fifty thousand that we'd be paying for the wastewater treatment plant. So it's not gonna have any impact on our debt service of any material kind over the next, and, and again, if I had the supporting document, it'd tell you exactly that I think it's about seven years, something like that. And then we, and I have a schedule that I can present to you with this to back, to back all this up. But then we go through a two-year period where their, their payments kick in. And so that's about two point seven million on the average for those two years. So we're looking at about a five million dollar additional debt service that we're not accustomed to in this fund to incur over a period of the next, about year eight, year seven, net time frame. And so I spoke, spoke to, to Lindsey and to Davenport, our bond consultants, to see what our options are for that, to plan. Because one option would be to set aside that, an amount over the course of time, over their seven years, that we already have that five, five million in hand so that we would be able to pay that debt service. The other option would be to, to just wait it out and we get to that point in time to go get an issuance. go get an issuance of debt to cover that $5 million. And if we did that, the, at the, at the end of that period, even with the debt service on that $5 million, our, our debt service would decline once that overlap period, that two-year overlap period ends. So we'd still be paying less than the debt service that we're paying today after that year eight. So you can see, it's actually, other than that $5 million that we could, that we can solve that problem through the issuance of debt, we don't really have any challenges as a result of this expenditure.
I, I can't wait to see the documents on this so that we can have a complete discussion because it's, number one, it's tremendous, tremendous concern to our sewer rate payers, many of whom are city taxpayers of course. And number two, I think from the standpoint of saying, this is how, over the years, we're going to control and manage this situation, is going to be really important to being able to say to anyone who's interested in developing business here, this is what you can expect. I think the more the information that we can pull together and say, this is, this is what we can expect. Here's where we have to bite the bullet, here's where it gets easier, here's what it's going to mean in the short term, here's what it's going to mean in the long term. And I think the more we can give a clear picture of that transparently to the public, the better off we're going to be on so many different levels because it touches pretty much everything. Everybody's got to have their water and sewer service is on it. And for companies that are here now, we want them to be able to plan so that they can stay here. The ones that might be interested in coming, we don't want, you know, some kind of scary headline. But we also want it to be realistic. So I know as a business person, I like to know what to expect. So I'm really looking forward to seeing that and glad to hear so much conversation has already taken place.
Yeah. Got a good roadmap, we think. It's going to be pretty, fortunately, they, they did a great job negotiating with, I think their interest loan made this possible in giving us that period of time. Again, I don't know if it's exactly seven years, but approximately seven years of a payment of $150,000 is, is, wouldn't need it all, not, not particularly painful.
Now, is, is there a way that we can begin to sock away some of the 2.7 million that we'll be paying per year for the two-year period?
Well, there's a way, but it's going to, it's going to be entirely up to, to what's decided in this budget process. At this time, you saw that there's, and when we switch gears, when we get into the revenues, we budgeted to use revenues. So it's going to matter how, how we budget to whether that we, and whether we want to try to achieve that or whether we say that, given that we can borrow that fund, those funds at that time when we get there and still not, not have an increase, but have a decrease in our debt service. You might, you might conclude that it's, it's still responsible to take that path if you choose to. It's not irresponsible to take that path.
Well, one of the keys is, I mean, one of the things that we want to take a look at when we're deciding these debt things is the cost of using other people's money. You know, when you can get these zero percent loans, the cost of using other people's money is quite good. So a lot of it's going to depend on, you know, what, what would we foresee costing us at that time, you know, or probably, because we've been really very fortunate that a number of our bond issuances have been negotiated at really low interest rates. You know, our lease purchases, a number of things that we've gotten, we've made out pretty well on that. So I'll be interested in the comparison. Is that something that is part of our debt service discussion? Is it Tuesday or Thursday?
Tuesday.
It's first thing Tuesday, isn't it?
Yes.
I'm not sure I'm going to be here unfortunately. I'll see if I can try to make it if I can. Is, is that roadmap that you're talking about going to be part of that discussion?
I hadn't, I, it would be easier to do that Thursday, if we're meeting Thursday. I haven't got a schedule in front of me. We're meeting on Tuesday also.
Thursday, the eighth, then evening?
Give us a little window.
Thursday, four to six.
I mean, if that works for you guys, that would be.
Okay.
We move, maybe we move that. If you want to expand that, that clues, we could, we could do debt ceiling and get the schedule. That would be something that maybe you could share with others that would, you know, be citizen friendly as far as reach, readability. Explains our deep plan for funding the wastewater treatment plan.
This one's got the revisions on it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Revised when?
Thursday, the eighth.
When?
What?
When were the revisions made?
Today.
We got them by email. I just didn't, I just didn't get to print out a copy.
Yeah, we're scheduled four to six on Thursday. I can't go any longer later than that.
No, I mean, if that aspect of it had to.
If you need this to work Tuesday, it can work. It's not, it's not, it's not, I don't think it would be a problem. It was just if it was just as convenient, we can make Thursday work if that's.
I think Thursday's fine. I think Thursday's, I think we'll have time. Any other questions for Mike and Amanda?
It just seemed to me that if we were going to discuss one, it made sense to have the big picture.
Sure. And so that would, they would both be on Thursday, correct? That's fine. That's fine, I mean.
Mike and Amanda, if you could run the permission for ride along for recycling through the chain of command, I'd appreciate that. And then we can work out a time when I can do it, several times after. We'll get the numbers that we've been looking for for years. Ooh, ah. Do I get some hard toe shoes too, you know, safety shoes?
It's not a question.
Spring around.
I'm good, I have some, thank you. And a hard head.
I take a D-bore.
Yeah. All right.
Shall we do revenues for the water sewer fund? It won't take long, it's not like the general fund, there's just a few. Probably the best way to follow along would be if we, if we have your budget analysis books with you, page one.
That important, huh?
Page one five. And that's the complete list. And just to kind of get rid of some of the noise, I have just the ones that increased by any amount and the ones that decreased by any amount up on the screen. So just going to walk us through those. And to start with, the, the line items that increased, the first one that increased by the most is the inspection fees. And we've got them jumping from five to $35,000, increase of 30. And it's just based on projections. We, when we drill down and looked at the, the fees that we're getting for inspections related to new developments are up. So that's the first item. The second item, we call them administrative fees. You could also call them a late fee. It's that $40 that when you get your water turned off. And that, we've just had late fee activity increased and it's, it's just up based on our projections.
Is that all that is? No other fees that go into that fund?
That's the $40 fee.
Wow.
Yeah. The penalties, you can see, are accounted for several. There's just a very small increase in those and miscellaneous receipts and sundries. So that's about it for increases. As far as decreases, the, the urban services, that's just the, the account where we record the revenues related to the flat fees for folks that are outside of the city that are provided sewer services. Had a decline of about $20,000 on that. And our water and sewer sales each had projections that resulted in reductions in the amount that we budgeted as well. And that's, that's about it. All the other line items stayed, made sense that they stayed the same as they were the previous year.
Water and sewer sales reductions, it says based on projections. Is that due to the lower rate or is that?
Obviously, that's part of it. It's coincidental that the, it doesn't have to be because it's based on what we've, which was actually been built and collected. But the line item for water, I just did it on the screen, you can see it came out to be exactly two and a half percent of that $90,000. I can check, I, I bet, I'm sure this one's much more. We could have over budgeted last year and that's why, so that was about 6.2%. But it includes the two and a half percent. They're just making those projected revenues real based on what we're seeing.
And what do you base those projections on?
We base them on what we've incurred up until the time that we make the projections. So we would go, if we did this in February, we would go through February and then we look at the months that remain and we look at the previous year for the months that remain and then add that to the amount that's been incurred to get an annual amount.
Okay. But you don't look at, say, construction coming on for.
Not even, no, no.
On loan? No. So these are fairly conservative?
Yes, they, they have an opportunity with destruction to decrease. The influence probably would be not particularly.
Sort of minimal.
Yeah.
Yeah, unless you're talking 5,000 houses at one time.
Sure.
Okay. Well, we have what, 1,200 to 1,500 units that'll be coming online?
Addison Court and Ocean Isle.
Addison Court, Ocean Isle, the Marlin Manor expansion, Rivers Edge, the, those are all the big, I mean, that's huge.
South Division Street.
That thing, yeah. What is that called? The, the gathering?
The gathering, right.
That's why the inspection fees went up five to $35,000 because of this surge of activity.
Sure. Okay. I mean, that's, okay, so it could be a significant increase. Why is not to budget for it though? Okay. The gathering.
And just, just, I guess finally, maybe it should have been touched on, this is a baseline to see where we are in the water sewer fund on, back to revenues. You can see at this time, on page two, the last line item, it shows a new use of surplus of about $1,278,000. So that's, that's, that's where we are at this time. So as we make adjustments, we'll keep an eye on that, on that, on that total. And that was what was necessary to balance the budget.
I'm sorry, Keith, where are you?
On page two, the last item, the last line item that says.
Are you in the analysis?
Four, six, yeah. Page two of the analysis, the account was four, six, nine, eight, one up.
Okay.
So I just wanted you to use that as a baseline as you go forward. We'll be keeping an eye on that as we make adjustments. I guess we could also skip to the debt, debt services that I think we skipped over when we went through the operating line items. And the org was for the water fund and sewer fund was 70107, 70102. I'd like to pull them up on the screen as well.
Would you?
Got them right here. If you want to follow along on the screen, you can. For the, for the, for the water, in the water fund, we had an actual decline of $94,380, the difference of 498 and 404. So we saw a decline of 19% in our debt service for the, for water. On the second, on the, through sewer, we have a total of 3.9 million versus 4 million, $94,000, and that difference is $169,000 or 3.9% decline as well. And I'm going to do the water administration for the billing and sewer administration billing as part of internal services. That's typically what we've done. So that's only a piece that's not, not been addressed thus, thus far.
Keith, can I just ask, that last one that you sent us, did we get a copy?
Absolutely.
Yes. Like anything that you, that you're showing up here, it's always so nice after you've presented it to us to have it in hard copy.
Those two schedules are actually in, in the book. They're under that same section, 70107.
All right.
I just popped them up on the screen.
It looked different, so.
Oh, I'll verify that they're the same then.
No, I just meant, I mean, it.
Okay. Yeah, I'll just verify.
It may just be the difference in seeing it, you know, in the spreadsheet that way.
Okay. Okay, so that should be all that we had for the water, except for what I was going to do as far as internal services.
Internal services, okay.
Next, short and sweet is the Marina account. That's on page, you know, 1,300. There's a chart there. And then the next page, pressure walls, all the new descriptions. As far as significant changes, we're not proposing any significant changes for personnel service, operating expenses or capital outlay. So what we're looking at there is, page 1305, personnel services, $34,239, operating expenses of $39,275. That, those personnel expenses are to dockmasters, they're part-time, just to let you know. So I don't think the 2% step increase is included on the part-time.
Is there anything else in the way of promotion?
Couple of things we're looking at. The one is, we're trying to promote the winter anchorage on it there. After Sandy, we came up with the idea, a lot of people have their boats destroyed because they're exposed anchorages out there. And we've gotten some, collected some publications, like Salty Dog that published in that area. And we're going to look, put in an ad in to advertise the safe anchors that we have there because you're away from the coast.
Right.
You know, get the impacts of the hurricanes, the water, you can have the barnacle build up because it's more of a freshwater condition. So we're trying to do that. The other thing, the promotion, we're looking, trying to get the grant for the kayak launch, get people more interested.
See what kind of grant for that, okay.
I could just check with VNR on that. We're working on the design and application for that.
Okay. And the idea there was you were going to float, you were going to construct floating?
Yeah, because you want the floating, you want it to be downward, the water level is rather than the tide.
And that fit inside of some of the slips?
We're going to convert the one slip there, which is opposite where the fireboat is, where you come in and then you have the ramp to go down and do the kayak launch. And then we're. And then we're also looking at extending the floating ramp that would make it amenable for rowing teams.
Great.
Exploring that, because SU's expressed some interest there. So we're going to be working with DNR to come up with that. Really excited about that. Some of the beautification doing, then we talked about with the signage, to let people know where it is, we've redone the website. The Marina used to have its own separate website, it's been integrated into the city website, because a lot of your boaters utilize internet through their phones to locate these anchorages and whatnot.
You sail? You sail, right?
I've learned how to sail, but my lineage is more paddleboating.
Okay, all right. Your lineage is...
I'm one of those.
Does anyone in the room sail? Okay. Then you'd know more than certainly me on this. Salisbury University has a sailing club.
Yeah, club.
Right?
I think it's a club and a competition.
And they house their boats in West Ocean City, right? In Ocean Pines, that area?
Well, they used to house them down in...
Off, what's it called? Oh, that, okay.
Down that way, Tyusken.
Okay. The most recent thing I heard was that they're in West Ocean City, Ocean Pines area now. And I wondered if that was because they needed open water?
I don't know. I could, I could find out.
Could you sail? Like, like from...
From a competition standpoint, I think Y Comica would be difficult from competition.
But from a club standpoint?
Well, because with sailing, having, my uncle was a sailor, so it's a different set from my uncle. But in terms of being able to tack and, you know, the reaches that you have to do, the different points.
Yeah, it's so limited there.
Yes.
It's sort of a canal.
And you can do it on a chop tank, they have several races.
There's a broad expansion.
Exactly. That's why so many Salisburyans who sail have their things up at Cambridge, because the Y Comica's just not wide enough at this end. There's so much buildup and trees and houses and stuff, you don't get good wind, and it's a really, it's a fur piece out to really good sailing area. And that's why most of them do not...
Doesn't make sense to store.
There's only been a few sailboats in the Marina that haven't given time, and usually, you know, somebody's going to come in and stay for a while.
It's mostly a protected harbor.
Yeah, but I mean, it's way protected because it's just so far upstream from where you can realistically do a good sail.
Thought I'd ask.
I, I want to ask a couple of questions here. Is this realistic? We've, we've got the FY fifteen proposed for eighty-four thousand dollars, and the FY fourteen projection, both the revised budget and a hundred thousand, was a hundred thousand four hundred and sixty-six. So what are we running at currently? Because one of the goals behind the Marina fund was to get this Marina to a state of self-sufficiency. Traditionally, historically, whatever network you want to use, have done transfers from the general fund. Now, I think one of the things, moving it back into public works, rather than outsourcing the contractor, has been beneficial. I really do, I've seen a lot of improvements, both in the upkeep of the Marina since we did that. But, you know, are, are we looking at being able to attain that this year, that self-sufficiency?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what the numbers is on.
And the expenditures exceeded the revenues this year, so required a transfer from the general fund, it's budgeted twenty-two thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars, you can see it on page two. This fund, oddly, the revenues appear after the expenditures, this way to seventy thousand. And you can see in the previous year, we needed twenty-three, the original budget included twenty-two thousand four, so it's still in the pipeline here, but it's still requiring the use of some support.
We're looking at some reductions in electricity, again, through the cost savings and the bigger gasoline expenses, reduce, reduction on that to twenty-five thousand seven.
Chaney's not here, but I know she'd say, we need a barbecue, whatever the thing was, you know, crab, crab feast, something.
At, at the minute.
For an event.
Yeah, an event.
Okay.
And I know that, you know, there's some folks who've looked into that. But, you know, we, we have to keep working on that because this, this is one of the problems that we had when they developed this Marina there. I don't know whether there's any kind of collaboration that can be done with the condo owners across, you know, some places the condo owners have a thing they pay and then they can go slip their boat. But this Marina was situated in a place that, as we discussed, I mean, part of your, your clientele automatically is not going to come, so unless we entice some sail, sailing yacht clubs from, say, the western shore like Solomon's comes to Cambridge, you know, to entice one of them to, to come up and, and do something like that, but usually that's a courtesy type of exchange, it's not a moneymaker. But things like municipal golf courses, municipal pool, well, not so much pools, golf courses and marinas typically are generators for your municipality. Ours is not. And a lot of it has to do with the obstacles of how far upriver it is. So we're going to have to really do some brainstorming about how we leverage that Marina and make it generate the kind of funds that it should.
I think just to get walking traffic in there, and I, I look to, you know, the, the weekends that we have something going on, on that end of the city, you know, to have the Marina open and invite people in to have a look and, and give them a reason actually to come in and have a look. Just gives a little more exposure, and it's almost free. But, you know, using that, that area as part of the event.
Two thoughts on this? Yeah. I think, one, it should, it should absolutely be revenue generating. And, you know, I think more, more to the point, there are, there's an opportunity, you know, with development happening just beyond it, with Chesapeake East and with Brew River, there's, this is the gap. There's a parking lot, a well-sized parking lot, so this is the gap. And, and I think whatever happens there, as long as we maintain a focus on linking, on the linkage, both on the street side and on the riverside, I mean, the public right of way, I think a lot of things could happen within that piece of land, which is not critical to the function of the Marina. You know, one, you know, temporary things, you know, in terms of events, things like that, and then long-term investments on that piece of property.
Slipwise, what's our, what's our current capacity? Are we thirty percent, forty percent?
No, I think we're under thirty percent.
Under thirty.
Because the economy, the boating economy has just killed us. I mean, one of the things, we've tried to price our gas as cheaper than the surrounding area to try to generate traffic that way. One of the other things I think didn't, should have that enclosure, possibly using that for boat storage, maybe get some rent that way, storing their boats there on the trailer. So there's some other things that we're looking at, but the markets, it's very expensive to, you're probably getting up almost to where you're playing. But hopefully as the economy comes back, people start investing. I'm hoping that the guy out there with his kayak that he bought from Survival Products, he's paddling around, he's looking at nice boats, and he gets one and he puts it in his lift.
I see in the program, go ahead.
Nope, I didn't say that.
In the program goals, they have designated an area of the Marina, canoe, kayak, paddleboard launching and storage. When you look at storage, are you talking about paddleboard stor, I'm sorry, a, a storage of what? Public?
Well, the, the, two things, there's this, we have that large area that's fenced in the parking area.
Yes.
That could be used for someone who has a boat in a slip, and then in the winter they pull it out and put it on a trailer. We can then collect a fee for storming on land, which, you know, is a runabout type thing would be. The other thing is, if we get the kayak set up, I'm looking to try to partner with Survival Products and working with them where, instead of you, you get done with work and you've got to go home and you've got to stick the kayak on top of your Subaru and then you drive over and unload it.
Great.
Is to have a rack there, then for a very nominal fee, because we're encouraging activity, just like you're saying, at the Marina, they can come and get their kayak off from a protected area, go and do their workout, come back in, load it back up on a rack.
I, I think a fair number of people, if it was secure enough, would be interested in that.
Well, you just hit on a big thing, and that's...
Security is huge, yeah. I think it's probably worth mentioning, yesterday I met with Survival Products.
Oh, did you? Did you get up?
On this, on this, on this very idea. And, you know, they were very, very open to it, so, you know, I'll happily send them on...
Well, that's great, I'm meaning to give, because I wanted to, as this grant thing moves forward, tell me if Chesapeake's interested in being a sponsor of the rowing team. And I was going to hit up Survival Products for a letter of support to go with you.
Maybe we can go further, gift them to have the location or something.
Yeah.
Brian is the guy, Rick's the owner, and Brian's the sales guy.
I know that Marina's all over, as you say, are having a tough time right now. And people are looking at alternative ways of slipping their boats and cheaper marinas and going to mornings and things like that, so, I mean, it's not just here. But I will say this, the, the prime thing is, there has to be some way, get the slip rentals up, because that's your bread and butter for Marina. That's also what enables you to create a Marina community. So I know it's not easy, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, I'm just saying that as we look at this, you know, an event here and there, or, you know, public awareness, Marina's typically, they're, they're like membership groups, you know, and to some extent, they don't really want a whole lot of people walking through their, casing the boat, so to speak. So security is definitely very prime, I know at Marina's that we've been to, that when there was unusual activity, or, you know, you started seeing a bunch of people you didn't know in, in the head, that type of thing.
Started getting suspicious.
Yeah, that's when you call the dockmaster in, and sometimes the police would come in. So, I mean, there's all these different considerations that you need to keep in mind with it, and I just have to keep working on it, but...
We've looked at the rates in terms of where we are, we're very competitive as far as slip rates, compare with Summer's point, you know, competitor. Of course, the yacht club has other amenities which are there as well. The other thing we haven't gotten into discussing is that we don't, right now, we don't allow liveaboards. Whether that could be a possibility in terms of, you know, people, you know, having a boat, I mean, like a houseboat, that they could go motor around, but allows them to stay over.
What's, what's the reason for not allowing?
I mean, it's obviously extra effort in terms of security and services that may be there, pumpouts, things like that, but it's something that could be explored. You look at these communities like in Seattle, incredibly successful, those are, San Diego with liveaboards, it kind of thoughtfully meant a community.
In Oxford, along the Thames, I mean, there are hundreds of people lived in, in their boats.
Well, I, I can tell you from some experience with this, that there were some incidences here where they had to, shall we say, evict somebody.
Really?
Yeah, a couple of things got tense. The reason that a number of marinas around here don't allow them is liability issues, that makes their insurance rates go much higher, and I don't know whether that's changed, you know, I doubt it.
Or, or how much that might affect our insurance, I mean, worth exploring with legit.
Yeah.
Pass on that cost.
You know, I know the municipal, to my knowledge, the municipal yacht basin in Cambridge still does not allow liveaboards, although they've had a couple of people there.
One of them does, but I don't know if it's municipal or...
I don't think it's municipal.
The one that, the one that's kind of out front, no, not by the Hyatt, so maybe it's not municipal, but the one that's got the lighthouse kind of set out.
That's municipal, you got the municipal and you got the yacht club right next to it, on the most side of the side. And they expanded it, they did some expansion.
Maybe it's in the yacht club side that allows.
I don't think, like, I agree with you, the municipal doesn't allow it, but so maybe it is the yacht club.
Maybe it's the yacht club.
I know the Hyatt went to renting those slips out, so we don't just have trains here anymore, you have to go in and keep your boat at the Hyatt, which sounds kind of cool, but...
Keep your boat at the Hyatt, that's...
So I don't know whether that ends up being a liveaboard situation.
Yeah, it's, I guess it's probably not, it's probably more akin to the condo owner arrangement that some places have, where there's, you know, a set of condos across, but there's, there wasn't, wasn't enough slippage.
Right, right.
So where they had higher demand for it.
And they may limit you to, you know, two weeks, and then you've got to move out and come back in kind of thing to keep it from being a permanent type stuff for those slips.
It certainly would be worth something to explore, whether or not there's any arrangement with the one over here on every side or not. And what you'll get into with the trailerables is that most people around here who trailer their boats are happy to trailer on home and maybe they're safely in their garage or in their backyards. So I don't know that you're going to find much of a market from a storage perspective for that.
One of the committee members, I don't remember where he lives, but his boat in this community, which is sort of like a private community, apparently started to strip people storing their boats, because they're having complaints, you know, boats in backyards. So he thought that might generate some interest, because we kind of talked about the storage, making it more effective use of storage.
And a lot of HOAs do not allow that.
And that may drive some business back our way.
That might be worth pursuing.
I know, oh, sorry, I'm trying to remember that. I mean, there's also different ways you can look at it from a community engagement perspective, to see what the residents, what, what they like to see happen to the Marina. You can look at it from a residential perspective and from the business community, hey, we're taking ideas, or what would you like the Marina to look like? Then you can look at, also, like, you know, private partnerships, and trying to work together with the business community, hey, we have a Marina, what are some of your ideas in reference to making it better and, and creating more development around Marina? Even, like I said, going back to community engagement, taking those ideas and then developing an action for the Marina, develop, you can call it a Marina action, basically, you get the ideas from the community, that's what you like, and then you can look at it from a CIP perspective, a long-term project, something like that. Sorry?
Do you have anything on paper at this point as far as the kayak storage?
Yeah, we've had, we had a meeting with DNR, brought them down here, they're presently doing a design on it. They were very excited about it. They even encouraged us to, as far as the rowing team, to look at the facility that got built for, I can't remember which college it is in Washington DC, right off the Potomac by the Wilson Bridge, now there's a beautiful boat house facility down there. I'd like to take an opportunity to go down there and just say, yes, yeah. But if I, as I get something, we'll be coming to counsel to kind of, I will have the approvals, submit the grant or not, but that's kind of where we're at. They've taken, they're excited about it so much that they're helping us with the design and helping us submit the grant application and whatnot.
I seriously think that could fly, yeah, definitely. Do we have any talk about, you know, we have paddleboats in the, in the, in the park. Is there any chance of expanding that to the Marina, so that people can tool around little bits of downtown in the paddleboats?
I guess it's possible, I think if you do something like that, maybe it'd be better to have someone down on the branch.
Yeah.
Calmer water kind of thing.
Where you actually, and we actually have a floating dock.
Yes.
Right.
That might be a good spot to...
And I don't, I'd have to think about the high tide exposure only. I know when... I know when we get high tide, sometimes we can't get our boat up there for the trash.
Oh, no, you can't.
Or some poor guy out there in the river, he can't get it.
He's stuck on the north end.
Bang, bang, bang.
He doesn't have a cellphone.
Put that bridge back.
So, those are things that are possible.
And his pager's not doing him in again. So, uh, with a location like that, uh, if, if something like that were to work out, water cleanliness would be really important. We might need to increase the amount of cleanup we're doing or the frequency of the cleanups. And then I, I also had a downtown business owner mention the other day in passing that, um, what he thought were the outfall pipe catchment devices, the, um, the net capture devices, that there were several locations where they were and they look like they're missing on outfall pipes in downtown.
But they still not.
We don't have that many actually. There's just the one.
Yeah, the main, it was only the one on, at the river part.
By the bridge.
Yeah, I think the one was, I think that was down, I think the one.
So, they may be mistaken.
Yeah, there's the, there's the ones on the inlets.
The inlets, right.
And then there's the, they had that one, was a power project at the, at the outfall part.
Mm-hmm, okay. Is that still there and functioning?
I have to check. I remember we were talking about it, that it was, they had to go down and do something with it. But I'll have to look to see if they, they might run into a problem with it. Some have to be repaired or whatever. But, um, those, that's probably one of the inlets that's getting repaired on the river, yeah.
Yes.
So, at that point, we can kind of evaluate the.
Glad you brought the Riverwalk up. Where are we on the Riverwalk structural repair?
Sure. Uh, phase one bid opening is tomorrow afternoon. So, this is the outfall repairs and the weeps that will be installed. So, that's good news. Cross your fingers. That's tomorrow. And, uh, and then phase two, we got the ninety-five percent plans last week. I've been through them. We're getting close. Uh, so this was the other repairs with the tiebacks and the anchors. We have some that'll be done trenchless and some where we'll be, uh, putting a concrete deadman on. So, we wanted to get phase one under construction. Phase two is right behind it and, and it'll go out to bin once we have phase one under construction.
And, and there's a third phase, right?
Uh, no, we, we ended up lumping it into phase two. We had talked about breaking them out separately, but then after looking at it, we kept. So, phase one is, is sort of, uh, the stability phase. We wanted to get the outfalls repaired so that water's not getting behind the forehead. We want to get the weeps installed so that water's draining out. And then, uh, phase two is the major structural stability.
Where does this, where does the surface fit into this?
Surface is in phase two.
Okay.
And so, you'll see in phase one, when we repair the outfalls, we'll be putting back the temporary surface so that all the surface is replaced at the same time and looks consistent.
It'll be like a stone.
So, we'll have stone or something down.
A temporary surface.
Temporary, just stone or some, you know, where they have to, uh, take up a section of the Riverwalk to replace an outfall. They'll just put stone down until phase two is done.
Okay.
And then we'll do a permanent.
And, and that will, the phase two permanent, will that be uniform?
Yes. Well, what do you, well, my only hesitation is that, yes.
That was, that was classic.
But.
No, yes.
You were leading, I was hoping to say, well, you know what I mean.
Yes, but, um, a couple of things. The main thing is the plaza, uh, down on the east end of the Riverwalk to southeast end. Uh, we weren't necessarily proposing to tear that entire area up. So, we need to have some consistent, you know, we'll be replacing the Riverwalk surface. So, it will either be, it'll either look like a sidewalk or stamped concrete and we're, we're still working out what the surface will look like. This exposed aggregate, it's very unlikely it'll be that same type of surface.
So, will the entire surface of the Riverwalk from end to end, every section, at some point be a, a uniform material?
Yes, yeah, the Riverwalk itself, that plaza area is another, you know, another animal itself. I think we'll probably end up cutting through a Riverwalk swatch and then you'll have the plaza that's still the expanse.
The rest of the plaza will be something else.
We can't redo the whole thing.
Right.
Of course.
And we can't do what it used to be. So, we gotta come up with this, like Amanda mentioned, we kind of look at a stamped concrete type design. It should be a four-foot concrete and then, and then do it in nice, you know, so it looks good as opposed to a patch.
Have, have we looked at other Riverwalks in, you know, say Frederick and Apollis elsewhere to see what they, what material they went with and how it looked and?
Not yet, but that's a good idea.
Yeah, could we do that?
We are, we are at that phase now. That's the, the final details we need on the phase two.
I didn't realize that that, the stone, whatever we have today, what do you call it?
The exposed aggregate.
The exposed aggregate. I didn't realize that that was not done anymore, but I'm not surprised.
Because if you wash the stuff off in the river.
Right. The way you, you, you wash it off, you just keep doing.
It's an acid wash. It's take off that layer of concrete, exposed the aggregate underneath.
And to capture all that water instead of running off into the river would be just a piece of.
Sure. Primarily not, not kosher.
Kind of like a state, state stamped concrete, because what we would do, we would preserve the stamp. So, if we ever do repairs in the future, we can reuse the stamp. And you can even do customized stamps if you want to, whether it's some kind of symbol or fish or something. And then the one, the initial one we were looking at was, that was an artificial board block. It looks like wood.
Really?
Concrete where you do the stamp. So, there's these, all these different things that are out there, but it's a neat, affordable way to do it and make it look nice.
Is it stamped and dyed or just?
Oh, you can do dyeing also. You can change the colors with it too. That's an option. Oh, our first concern is how much it's gonna cost.
Right, and it gets a little tricky to match in the future. It's, it's easier to match if we don't dye it.
Right, it's like when you do something, it looks good, that kind of the color fades a little bit.
Yeah.
When you do a pair, it's darker.
Right, I understand. How much ladder exit? There's only one ladder that goes down at the east prong.
On the Riverwalk?
Yeah.
Um, well, you have the floating dock.
All the way down by the hotel is where I'm, I'm talking about.
Oh, down there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'd have to look again, but I, I would take this. You're talking about the safety ladders.
Right. Well, we were talking some, at some point, one of the ideas was having like, um, radio controlled boat races up and down that, that little area there. So, is there a spot that, that we could actually, you know, slide a floating dock up there temporarily, anchor it and then, uh, do the deed from that end?
If you went all the way up there, the problem is, if you're gonna do boat works, you kind of wanna have it in the center, your, of your radio range, as opposed to all the way up there where you got the bridge in the way and everything.
I'd like to see your input on that because if, if that's an idea, I think.
Where it is, where the floating ramp is now, I think would be kind of cool. Because then you've got some good space in there. You get people can line both sides there and watch it.
Close, probably close Division Street Bridge temporarily and people looking both directions. That would be a viewing platform.
Some parts where you get there, there'll be model builders.
Right.
They have the accurate battleship and they go turn around.
Submarines.
Yes, submarines. Never understand. I've worked too much about a thousand dollar submarine.
Never coming back out. Being eaten.
That's a neat idea.
Okay, good, good. Do you know of any dredging coming up in the next X number of years?
Not in the city. There, there's the dredging project that's ongoing at the Wycomico River to maintain shipping.
Three million dollar project. But we're, we're good for depth at this point, I guess.
For the Wycomico?
Mm-hmm.
Well, no, it's the reason they're doing dredging in order to preserve that. I think the other thing that they're trying to do is widen the channel as part of the dredging. Not with depth, but with, to support the increased activity at Chesapeake. Which is a nice, the big struggle there is always finding sites for the spoil, which material.
Yeah.
And sustain, um, income sources to be able to fund future dredging effort because it's, it's an ongoing thing. It's a challenge.
But we're good as far as channel width and depth for what we use it for at this end of the river?
Again, you'd have, the, the input you'd have to give there is from Chesapeake.
Do you mean, once you get past the Mill Street Bridge?
The users?
Oh, yeah. I mean, is that, is that what you? Well, actually, because we're going, you know, not only up past the Mill Street Bridge, we're turning left and going up the, the west prong as well.
Is that where you're referring to?
Actually, the whole, the whole little, just a little two-way there. North and east. Going to the west prong and then going to the, and the north prong.
The type of uses that we do, obviously the, the branch is.
Right.
Pleasure boats kind of, you're limited in terms of what traffic you can have anyway. And I think that, that you have an actual flushing action on, on, on the branch.
I was just thinking of the commercial side, not so much the, the pleasure side of it.
Well, the commercial side is purely the river and through.
And barges. The only piece we have there is the north prong and then, and there's only one user left and. I don't know whether or not the upper Wycomico dredging project includes the north prong.
I kind of don't think it does.
I kind of don't think it does either. I'd kind of leave it alone. I wouldn't want to disturb all the stuff that's maybe under there. And then the, um, the upper Wy, the upper Wycomico is the first project and the lower Wycomico is the second project. And upper Wycomico is supposed to start, like, uh, at the end of this year.
Yes. I think the biggest thing with the upper part was getting that barge out of there.
Well, I mean, from the upper, the, the federal funding that came through is one and a half million dollars in the upper and that's all the way down past the ferry, the upper ferry. From, from downtown to around the upper ferry. And then one and a half million from the mouth of the Wycomico up to that part. And I can't remember which is first, but, you know, over the next three years, that project is supposed to, or the next two and a half years, that's, we're supposed to see all that dredge. Upstream is probably, well, from a verse, from a drainage perspective, would reverse, yes.
Okay. Any other questions, Ryan?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just a real quick one.
Sure.
At some point, I'll send you some information, Mr. Maltz, but some time ago, I had sent information to the Department of Public Works on solar aerators for producing water improvements. The units aren't very expensive, they're like six hundred dollars a piece. I had suggested possibility of getting some, um, you know, in the area of the zoo or whatever. And the concept is that it makes the duck poop float to the surface, just poop whatever, and let na, Mother Nature, the sons of you be raised, do some disinfecting. Um, I think that that would be a worthwhile pilot to try out. You can talk to Lincoln Park Zoo. I know they took them in place on their little island with all their water panel. They, they still have them. As far as I know, I did manage to talk to somebody who says, "Well, actually, we're having a little bit of problem with, with algae bloom, but it's due to our, our shitty water." I was like, "Ooh." And so, I didn't really get to talk to somebody, you know, shall we say, higher up to really, you know, find out if they've been monitoring, whether it's helped with the nutrient availability of water. I don't know what they're measuring, but I think it's something worth investigating because, uh, we have, even though it's a river, we have lots of portions of this that are fairly, uh, slow-moving and not, you know, wild. We're, we're not talking five-foot drop tidal differences here. So, um, you know, and, uh, because they're solar operated, you don't have to hook up and electricity issues and costs and stuff. I just think it'd be something worth looking into because if it could get us in some of our upstream ponds and feeder areas, um, three months of, of modification, including the river overall. Because one of the measurements I remember the creek watchers telling us about was that we actually had nutrient loading issues further upstream than the wastewater treatment plant that were a concern. So, that might be something that we'll look into that.
Yeah, I think, I've, I've heard of those, uh, seeing stuff on that. To actually have somebody that's used it for a period of time to see how the reliability.
Yeah, and there may be other, other folks. The only reason I kind of tried to get in touch, I mean, it was kind of hard to find somebody to talk to. The reason I thought of them was just because of the, the zoo thing, um, because of, you know, animals. We really should try to help them some more.
Yeah, we want to, we've, um, once you get the animal health building out of the way, our next project is go through, look at what our water uses are, get, feed the alligator pen and then that water runs off and kind of reuse some of the stuff. Uh, maybe creating a green space between the, uh, the creek and the alpaca pens so that nutrients are trapped by the grass, you know, they're not off going into it and different things like that, so.
Sounds like a nice stormwater management project.
Exactly.
Yeah. You don't, you don't have any water capture at this point at, at the zoo, do you?
Water into the stormwater basin, you know, you got, it's low area, you know, you're.
Right.
Uh, it's hard to capture all that stuff because you're just, you're right there.
Yeah, I was thinking about rain, rainfall.
We'll have, uh, rainwater cisterns at the animal health building.
Excellent.
And they connect to yard hickens.
Good, thank you.
We do have rain gardens in the park. But, um, you know, it's just something I, I would love to say is explored because I think for a minimal amount of money and whatever testimonies we can get from others who have employed it, maybe it's not any promise at all for, you know, a small amount of money. I think a big investment would pile it out and see if it makes a difference and it has green areas.
Thank you.
Thank you. For your time and work and effort and insights and changes of procedure and all those good things.
Saving money in unexpected places.
All right, well, have a good night.
You too. Keith, we can, uh, I was gonna avoid making eye contact for a minute and just sheepishly apologize, but, um, we are about out of time for that. So, we, we could go late. Um, I hate to keep staff here.
It's, uh, don't worry about me. Don't worry about you all. Terry, Tim. I'm not trying to influence you either way.
Terry, Tim.
How much time do you need for, I mean, right now, well, the financial health presentation, are we doing that tonight or are we doing that another time?
We could lump that in, you know, to, we had it scheduled for tonight. We could lump that in with the financial discussion next Thursday.
I'd like to have the whole council here.
That, that was my goal.
I was gonna say, I'd like.
I really wanted everybody to be able.
Yeah, that's what I thought because I had, I had an email saying, you know, we wanna do this and once everybody can be here.
However, would you like to do, uh, internal services finance? The expenses?
Takes, it takes literally, uh, you can time me after I say this, six to seven minutes. I mean, it's not, it's gonna be pretty much painless.
But let's do, let's do internal services finance.
Okay.
I mean, do you mind separating those two?
I don't mind.
Okay.
Meaning, and the, and the two departments that are under it and water service.
Yes.
So, the way that we approach this is, um, going to page fifteen of your budget analysis report for the, uh, as far as, uh, uh, changes to any of the operating accounts. The one that should stand out, that's, uh, that the only one that had any significant change was, or any change was the line item that says buildings, uh, that's five, five, four, four O two. And, uh, that's because, um, we're proposing sixteen thousand dollars to buy additional safety provisions for the cashiering area. Some cosmetic changes, including a redo of that, uh, that area to make it look more appealing, which include carpet paint, a rework of the counter, um, and, uh, safety glass. And, uh, so that's what that's for. And some signage so that when folks come in, they don't have to ask everyone, "Where do you pay your bill?" We're trying to get them, uh, get them there without having to ask.
When you do that, um, my one request would be on signage, um, to go for temporary low cost, kind of like the, what Planning and Zoning did on, uh, second floor. And the only reason I suggest that rather than something really nice is because, um, a county has indicated that they do plan to do a signage overhaul throughout the entire interior of the building.
Standardize it all.
And not, not in this, it's not in this budget, even though they say, they said it was a priority, but it's not in their budget. So, it's like many other things.
Well, we.
However, however, if you, if you look downstairs, you can look at one door and see four signs that say the same thing for that door and they're all permanent.
Right, that's the discussion we had.
It's so confusing.
I, I just, I would hate to see you.
We wanted to direct them all, all, all away and then back with one, one sign.
Right.
And I had the guy, you know, the guy over here and we were, we were talking about our game plan. That was, uh, and one that stuck out above head level so that when you're looking down the hall, you know, you see cashiering, they can know.
One that's perpendicular to the, the wall.
Right, that sticks out. That was our hope at that time. But that wasn't the, the main purpose of this. The main purpose of this was.
Sure.
To make, uh, that area so that when you come in, right now, we have a very difficult time hearing because, um, they, they engineered these little metal plates in between you and. and the customer, and so when you get into a discussion, it's really hard to hear them.
Oh, the little, with the holes in it.
The little head cells.
They do not work.
Buy a ticket at the movie theater thing.
And it's bad enough if you're, if you, if you have a parking ticket and you're not very happy, and the person can't hear you on the other side, and that's just, that's just kind of inflicts pain to have it for everyone, so. But otherwise, um, this is a flat, uh, level, uh, operating budget, there are no other changes. So unless you have any questions, I would move to, um, the Water Service Fund, eight one five seven oh, which is page, um, six. And similarly, there were, there were few changes, except that we did not have sufficient postage, uh, we had to account for an increase, go from twenty-five to twenty-seven thousand dollars for the postage, an increase of two thousand dollars.
He has a separately capped thing, and it's by world, and that's fun to find.
Page six.
Yeah, hold on, I'm sorry, it's at page seven. Hopefully, that'll find, make it by page number.
No, because ours is all together, and we have to, what's the account number?
Uh, the account number is eight one five seven oh, so you're going to Water Service Fund.
Right.
You should have a report like this, I thought they distributed that. Does that look like your, yours? That's the detail, that's why.
Right.
Stay out of there, stay, that should have done it, yeah.
This is just, this is just.
See that just for a second, just see what you were. And, uh, yeah, the problem is, this is, this is the general fund.
It's all general fund.
Yeah, so we gotta jump to Water Sewer, see if it's in there. And, um, so far, the, this entire book is general fund.
Right, there's no water.
So there is no Water Service Fund.
That explains it.
That explains it.
I thought it was me, that I had misplaced the.
I will send, I will see that you're set, the, now, I can bring them up on the screen here, just so that we can get it down, and just pop it up here, and then we can let it out of there.
No, I'm not crazy, well, I may be crazy, but not, not as indicated by that.
All right, so we will go for, uh, the Water Sewer Fund, page seven. And it's up on the screen now, I'll make a date, and the, I have to change this in. And the item I'm talking about is this guy right there, that twenty-seven thousand right there, is two thousand dollars more than the previous year, just because that's what we've projected that we'll need. The other increase that we needed was for advertising, um, excuse me, printing, twenty-eight thousand, fifty dollars, this line right here, um, same thing, we just based on what we're incurred, we felt like we needed to have a thousand dollar increase. And because of the level funding requirement that, that the administration was attempting to achieve, we proposed to raise the hardship fund, which frankly, just isn't being taxed in the, in the previous years, we're not, you know, so, uh, the, the net of it is that, that we, we reduced that by the three thousand that covered the increases of three thousand, so that it netted out to zero.
One would have thought this would have been a year that that would have been really.
Well, I was gonna say, I wonder if that's because of turnover and people not being aware that it exists, or what?
I, I would be willing to bet that that's an awareness issue.
So you got, the, the criteria that we have for, for that program is, uh, is, is, has, has, is fairly extensive, and hey, you can, they can only assist you in one bill per year, but the, uh, Social Services does the administration, and you have to fit their criteria.
Do Social Services tell people this is available, or?
What happens is, is if, of course, the finance staff looks for opportunities to let folks know, that ask, or that are, sometimes they'll ask for extension, ask if we have any leniency or any provision.
Very good.
And as, as you know, there is, we don't have the authority to extend, uh, your water is turned off, but we do send them to Social Services and to seek assistance, you know, and then they go down there and they do what they can. So it's not a funding limitation, it's people have to fit within the criteria of the program.
Yeah, well, a lot of people who hit the wall on this are not necessarily in the Social Services system, they are people who may have just come up on the situation, or they're not income eligible, but they have other things that have created the hardships.
And I, I could tell you, I mean, for, the council should know that, that we have zero leniency on that policy, but there is, there is, there is very little, I should say, essentially none, where that you can get, uh, any other.
Relief.
Relief. So, it is, and that's, because the idea is consistently applied, once you start down that slippery slope, there's no end.
That's why, that's why everybody decided it was best to have the third party of Social Services, so it would be a criteria issue, because then it starts getting into, well, but you know, I wanted to be kind to this one, well, why weren't you kind to that one? We just didn't want to have it applied, you know, unequally.
Otherwise, things were level in that fund, the last fund that I was gonna have to address was, or last, sorry, department, was eight five oh seven oh, and that's on page sixteen, pull that one up on the screen. And, um, and then, five oh seven oh, there was, actually, uh, there were no changes, so we didn't really have to go there, it was the level from the previous year, as far as operating, any changes with the personnel costs that you've seen elsewhere.
How many pagers are out there, do you know?
How many?
Pagers? You know, we're not using pagers anymore, um, um. So are those being sent a surplus, or?
You saw that, it kind of concerned me, because it wasn't my, eighty-four oh eight oh's not, not my department.
I understand, okay, now I'm gonna back off on that then.
Yeah, that forty-eight cell phone says under there, that's in the, that's in the different, that's for the folks that are working in Public Works. But the, the account that I was referring to is this account right here, eight five oh seven oh, which is split between this page, and these are all personnel costs here on this page, and these are all the operating. And this, there's, there was, as you saw, we left six thousand in the hardship program for the water, there's fifteen thousand here under, uh, under this sewer section, the sewer bills, which is probably, you know, again, it's, it's, it's much more than what likely will be used.
Why do we choose fifteen as opposed to?
I, I just left that level, it was fifteen for a few years now, and.
Why not just double the water?
Why not what?
Just double the water fee, and just double the water amount, which is.
Both of the, no, both of them were decreased.
No, I didn't decrease this one.
No, no, I mean, both, both are.
Far as are declining.
Are using less than is budgeted. Only water was decreased.
Right. That's it, as far as those, uh, those divisions.
Could I please ask that you work with our city clerk to get the, uh, rest of the budget analysis, kind of the non-general fund stuff?
Put it right on the, uh, list here, so they send it over.
Thank you. Any other questions for Keith? Keith, thank you.
Yes. We still have to, I guess we still have that session.
We do. So, close the budget session. Thank you, everyone. Call the special session to order. All right, we have one item on our agenda, are we still going?
Thank you. Okay, now.
Okay. Call the special session to order, we have one item on our agenda, manufacturing tax exemption, uh, request from Delmore Brewing Company, I'll see. Do we have? Okay, I'll just hand it over to you, Keith.
Uh, what we have is a, a standard request for, um, a manufacturing exemption, as you guys know, they typically put on the consent agenda, but, um, we have received all of the information from them as necessary, and we're recommending that Delmore Brewing Company actually be granted exemptions for the personal property tax equipment for their, uh, equipment that they purchased in two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen. Since the request came, within two years of the purchase of the equipment, they are eligible for a five years exemption, so that is the full five years, and they'll benefit from this exemption by a total savings of sixty-seven thousand, uh, four hundred fifty-eight dollars in property taxes. Now, the exemptions will be applied to city property tax years two thousand fourteen through eighteen.
And the reason this was urgent?
Uh, the reason that it was urgent is because that, the day that it was delivered, we processed it, and that, that way they can continue to get a license, and to serve alcohol, you have to have a business license, and that was necessary.
It would have?
Yes.
There would have been a gap?
Yes, they needed, you can't get, you can't continue to, to have, that's my understanding, that, uh, tying it to the alcohol license isn't something that I know exactly, but their, their, their purpose was to get a business license, and we have to sign, uh, a business license before it can be validated, and we won't sign it unless it's a tax rebate.
Do, um.
We in motion.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I move that we, um.
We don't have, we don't have a resolution, which is what was throwing me for a loop. It's not done by resolution or ordinance.
It's using.
I, I move the, that we grant the manufacturing exemption requested to this establishment.
Sorry, second.
Second there is.
Any other?
Say entities, it's the LSC.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, unanimous. Any other items of business? Hearing none, we are adjourned.